Calling to order. Regular meeting of the Albany Unified School District Board of Education on Tuesday, August 25, 2020, the first day of school for our students. Sorry for the technical issues. We're going to try this again from the top. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Superintendent Wells?
Here.
President Trutain?
Here.
Vice President Duran?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Dos?
Here.
Trustee Hinckley?
Here.
Student Board Member Mala?
Here.
And Student Board Member Corzo Clark?
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome our newest Student Board Member, Leo Corzo-Clark, although he has been with us since June as a prospective Student Board Member, because this is the first day of school and the start of the new school year. This is his first official meeting. And now he'll have the rights to make in second motions and to cast a vote, an advisory vote with our other continuing Student Board Member, Audrey Mala. So we thank both of them for participating in this process. We'll move to item number two, the Pledge of Allegiance. Join in, if you will. Ready, begin. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Will our Student Board Members please read the AUSD Mission Vision Statement and our meeting norms?
"The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student."
"Our meeting norms are to maintain a focus on what is best for our students, to ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully, to endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's belief in what is best for students, and to make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their points of view."
Thank you. Our agenda not item number five, Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. There was no action taken in our closed session tonight. We move to Agenda Item Six, Approval of the Agenda. Board Trustees, would you like, would you like to request any change to our agenda? If not, if I can get a motion to approve it as is, that would be great.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second.
Okay. Can we, I think we might need a sort of a rider on that, given that we started basically half an hour late. So I just want everyone to realize that the times that were published in the agenda will all be shifted on, because of this. Ms. Shin, may we have a roll call on the agenda vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Corzo-Clark?
Yes.
Student Board Member Mala?
Yes.
Vice President Duran?
Yes.
President Trutain?
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley?
Yes.
Trustee Dos?
Yes.
And Trustee Clark?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I'm President Trutain. Just a reminder, thanks to Trustee Clark, we had an emergency or a special meeting about a week ago regarding the ATA and the district MOU, and we made a decision there, and we can report it out at this meeting.
I am so sorry, we, there was no action taken from our closed session earlier this evening. However, at our special meeting on August 20th, our special closed session meeting, we unanimously approved the memorandum of understanding with the Albany Teachers Association. Thank you for that reminder. It's an important announcement. And I wanted to thank all of the people who worked on that negotiation. And I appreciate our administrative staff and definitely our teachers. And I know they've had a, they've had a really, really busy summer preparing for this opening and greatly appreciate their efforts here on this first day of school. It's not easy to reinvent education over a summer, and I congratulate all of the staff who have worked so hard to bring this about. And that, I believe, brings us to our item number seven, Approval of the Consent Calendar. Board, are there any comments on our consent items? Now is the time.
I just have a question related to the consent, to one consent item, the assignment order. I noticed on this one, there's a lot of coming and going of staff, and I just was wondering if we do any kind of exit interviews at AUSD when people leave positions here?
I'd like to refer that question to our Chief Human Resources Officer, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you. So the question is whether we conduct exit interviews? We not have a common practice of conducting exit interviews?
Okay, thank you.
One thing I did notice about the personnel assignment order is that, you know, there are a lot of teachers that I know have been our continuing employees that were listed on the Personnel Assignment Order as, as new hires. A lot of that has to do with exactly, you know, any type of change in their, in their place of work or their, you know, whether their, their assignment is point two in one area and point eight in another. There are many things that would trigger that. And so I just, in case our Chief Human Resources Officer wants to also mention any, anything about that.
Sure. So this Personnel Assignment Order was, was a big one, as you saw. So what we had listed was three pages of changes. And so we had listed several folks who might be separating and/or taking leave for part or all of the year. And then, of course, we had many, many folks who were new hires. In that, in that sort of category of new hire, you do see returning folks. And that's because a lot of our returning staff were on temporary contracts last year. And the Board will recall that a temporary contract is issued when a teacher is filling in for another person who is on leave or if their position is funded through categorical funding or soft funding. And so folks who are returning this year, they may be returning for some of those same reasons. Or it could be that our, the leave that they were filling last year actually became a true opening for this year, where maybe the employee on leave actually resigned. And so there, there are only a select few categories that we, we list on the PAO. And so we list as a new hire because it is formally another, a new contract and a new offer. I am pleased to announce that some of our folks are actually coming back in probationary status. So they're on the tenure track this year, so that's exciting for them and for us, because that means that, that we want them back. And we, and we see them having a future here with our district.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gonzalez. And with that-
I have one question, I'm sorry.
Vice President Duran?
Thank you. I wanted to ask about 7/11. And I'm, I'm super knowledgeable about this, and I wanted to clarify. Maybe Ms. Gonzalez could clarify. Is approximately $375 an hour, is that common these days for a consultant?
You know, I'd rather take that question because of my experience working with hundreds of consultants over the last two decades. You pay for what you get. You can get a consultant and pay nothing and get a deal and get just that out of it, nothing. But as Trustee Dos, as I can quote him, and I hope he doesn't mind, if not, he'd get over it. And that is, this is Albany, and when we do things, we want to do it the best. And we want to recruit the best and give our teachers and administrators the finest experience because we expect with our high expectation, just that. And so you do have this as a going rate, but some areas, it's even more. And so, yes, I would say to you that this would be more of the norm for our top-level trainers. And you have her background, her resume. She was part of AXA, the Association of Californian Schools Administrator, where she's trained thousands of administrators, many superintendents on down, and school board members around the issue of equity. And I know you know all about that, Trustee Vice President Duran. But this is a rate that we think is a respectable figure.
Thank you.
And fair.
And with that, I will make a motion that we approve the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Shin, may we have a roll call, please?
Student Board Member Corzo-Clark?
Yes.
Student Board Member Mala?
Yes.
President Trutain?
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley?
Yes.
Trustee Dos?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Vice President Duran?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes unanimously, which brings us to our Agenda Item, Item Number Eight, Superintendent and Board Member Reports. Dr. Wells?
Thank you, President Trutain. Momentarily, you would see the superintendent report outline. But today was the first day for school for us, and it was a very interesting experience. I had the great opportunity to visit all the school sites. A number of our teachers were teaching from their classrooms. And I got to tell you, they were enthusiastic and focused. It was like a sanctuary in their classrooms where I would, I was reluctant to go in to interrupt. But when I got a chance to meet folks eye to eye, we did give each other a wave and a thumbs up. But it was an amazing experience, and it brought great joy to have a sense in this arena of new normal, is what some people call it, a normalcy. And we're hoping to, this won't last forever, but to see the excitement that our teachers bring shouldn't be surprising. I see why folks want to send their kids to Albany Unified School District because we simply have some amazing, amazing teachers. Today, we had some sites that had no technical difficulties, and we have some sites with some real technical difficulties. And like teachers, we put our heads together and folks figured it out. I'm going to ask Chris Knight, one of our co-ATA presidents. He shared a story with us today about one of many things they did in terms of problem solving as issues came up. Mr. Knight, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am, Dr. Wells.
Please chime in.
Okay, thanks. So, yeah, I just think there was a great example of teacher problem solving at the high school today. As you guys well know, having 1,200 students start virtual learning simultaneously is a huge logistical undertaking, especially when a lot of these technologies are being used to scale for the first time. So one thing I really noticed that was great was we began the day with some technical issues, of course, like I think probably every site did. And our, I want to, I want to give a shout out to our teacher librarian, Mary Ann Shoyer, who, she started just collecting all of these reports of different issues. And by the end of the day, had a Google Doc made with step-by-step instructions that addressed everything. And there were just so many communications flowing back and forth between teachers for how to solve these different problems. And I was just so proud of our, of our teachers and how collaborative they are and proud of everyone at the high school for making everything gel so well and coming at the end of the day with, with those solutions. So thank you, Dr. Wells, for the opportunity to share that.
That was just-
Dr. Wells, you're muted.
Oh, I was saying so many wonderful things that you guys missed out on, so I'll give you the short version. That was just one of many examples of all of our sites. When challenges presented itself, we, we created opportunities. And that's the kind of leadership we have in all of our ranks throughout our district. And I thought that epitomized that. So thank you so much, Mr. Knight. Ms. Shin, if you could put back the superintendent's report on the screen? And, and so the teachers I observed, I shared with you, it was a very exciting and heartwarming to see teachers just get back into their zone. This is a very, reminded me of this being a very, very special place. So, you know, that was the first day of school. Section number two, I want to talk about the new superintendent's student achievement, closing the gaps task force. We met last week, some of members, to kind of talk about how to get all key folks involved in the student achievement task force, closing the gaps, focusing on this achievement gap. And so we also talked about how best to engage in equity work, how do we move equity from being a word into an action and reflect it in our daily life and work? So that's exciting to talk about. My third item tonight, talking about a new commitment at our school sites to engage in a cycle of continuous improvement that you'll be hearing throughout the year. And basically, what that's saying is that in order to do equity work, equity work starts with data. And it is not just the data that we get annually from the state, but it's the data that we generate to help guide our footsteps. Some of the data that we're going to be generating in the next six weeks is pre-assessments. And then we're going to be looking at formative assessments that we administer throughout the year to tell us what kind of progress students are making, the actions that we take, whether or not it's effective or not, or whether or not we have to huddle up and make some adjustments so that we can give our students the best opportunity to meet grade level standards by the end of the year. And then the post-assessment is going to determine the efficacy of all those efforts, hence, closing and eliminating the achievement gap. And so our next step is to raise the consciousness of this basic process and then provide ongoing training to leadership and staff of how best to do this work. Teachers do this kind of naturally, but we want to kind of formalize it and make it more intentional uniformly. The fourth item is professional development. This has been a grand slam, according to our teachers. We've been getting raving reviews about the professional development we've been providing for teachers from the start of back in the spring to our most recent sessions. And at this time, I'm going to ask that our assistant superintendent chime in on some of the wonderful PDs that we offer, and I'll pick it up at the end. So Assistant Superintendent Marie Williams?
Thank you very much, Dr. Wells, for the opportunity. Good evening, Board and community. Dr. Wells, as Dr. Wells has said, our professional development, beginning, beginning in the spring and then concluding yesterday, has really been tremendous. And so I can't go any further without naming Jen Gritman and Richard Liu, who are our two new ed tech specialists, who came on board and immediately began planning professional development the week of the 10th of August, which was voluntary, but many teachers attended, many, many teachers attended. And then we were able, just last week, to provide professional training to all of our staff on the 20th, the 21st, and also on the 24th of August. We began our session centering our staff's wellness. We talked about community building. We offered professional learning on a host of tools that we are going to be implementing this year, from Zoom to Seesaw to Remind. And then yesterday, at what typically is our institute day, Superintendent Wells and our bargaining chairs kicked the day off with a welcome for all staff. And then I had the distinct privilege of working with, again, Jen Gritman and Larry Pratt, the Assistant Principal at Albany High School, to lead an initial professional development around anti-racist teaching practices, which is a conversation that we will continue this year and ongoing in service of seeking educational equity on behalf of all of our students. So it's been a great professional development experience, and we're looking forward to what we will continue to provide to our staffs weekly as the year goes on. Thank you very much, Dr. Wells, for the opportunity to speak to that.
Oh, anytime. And I just want to remind us, this is the first time of us doing school and starting school remotely. And so we are going to anticipate many challenges, hence wonderful opportunities to be creative and innovative and trying to make sure we give our kids the kind of quality education that we all want them to have. And this work by itself can be daunting, but together, and I say again, together, together, we can do this. We're looking forward to having a banner year in 2020, 2021. And so I'm excited about that. So let's go Albany. That concludes my report. President Trutain?
Thank you, Dr. Wells. I just had a very brief report. I wanted to mention that my child is a 10th grader at Albany High, and so I attended the orientation program. And I just want to give a shout out to Principal Darren McNally. I really feel that that, that was the most informative and best organized orientation that I have yet to see at the high school, and I've seen a few with my older, my older kid. And then today, I, even though I'm not sure that I was supposed to, the day started out at nine o'clock for the high school students with a kind of an assembly program, which was run by Principal McNally and our education technology specialist, previously middle school math teacher, Mr. Richard Liu. And, and, and that was also extraordinary. They walked through exactly how the high school kids will be accessing the curriculum and all of the different apps and features that they have put in place to help this year run smoothly. And I was, I was very impressed. I didn't attend his classes. It was only that, that first session, but I wanted to take a peek at it, and I was, I was very happy with what I saw. So thank you very much. Vice President Duran?
Good evening to our community. It is a new school year, and there's always excitement in the air about opening school and even during a pandemic. But what I wanted to do was take a moment to thank the ATA for bargaining in good faith and putting together a remote learning program that supports Albany's expectations and values. I am excited to see about, I'm excited about the new year and the learning possibilities for all our students. I'd also like to give a shout out, of course, to all our teachers, the support staff, and to the administrators. I'd also want to do one thing. Given that Albany has a commitment to equity and inclusion and respecting diversity in our schools, I wanted to take this opportunity for a first-time acknowledgement at our board meeting. Gracias and gratitude to the Aloney, the Indigenous, First Nations, original inhabitants of this land where we live and do our work. That's my report.
Thank you very much, Vice President Duran. We'll move to Trustee Clark.
Yeah, thank you, President Trutain. I just want to start off thanking all of our wonderful students, parents, teachers, and the entire staff for getting us off to a great start to the school year. It was nice seeing my children, talking to their friends, and parents, talking to their parents, helping each other out. And I want to let you know behind the scenes that teachers are reaching out to each other as well. We're all one big family here. There's going to be some hiccups at the beginning, but please be patient with us and know that we're all in this. And I hope that we have a very successful school year together. And it's just nice seeing the community coming together, starting off with the youngsters, the real young kids, all the way up to high school, parents, teachers, and everybody. It's just kind of amazing to see everybody coming together to do what's best for our students. So big shout out to the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Clark. Trustee Dos?
Thank you. I wanted to start my report by just thanking the teachers and also the students. This is, this is new for, for everybody, and it's tough on, it's tough on students who, you know, we're looking forward to the different grades that they're going into. And not so long ago, they had a certain view of how they thought it was going to look. And now it looks totally different. But I think that our students are resilient, and, and they're, they're making the best of it. And, and it's just been great to see all the kids on the Zooms. And, and so, you know, I wanted to take a moment to recognize them and just seeing all the creative things that teachers have been doing to, you know, enhance the learning already via Zoom has been great. So I wanted to make sure that I, that I mentioned that. On another note during my report, I wanted to mention that although we're not talking about it as much as we were directly following the murder of George Floyd, there's still so much wrong with how things are going. Jacob Blake was recently, another unarmed black man was shot by the police, and he will never walk again. We have moved on from the, the topic in a way, but, you know, I think it's important to mention what happened to this man, but then also to know that it might not be the thing that's running in the news as popular as the George Floyd murder. But it doesn't change the fact that nothing has changed and that it is still, the world is still a dangerous place. And it's especially dangerous for black men. And we continue to, to fight for and try and make change. But I encourage all of us tonight and as we move forward throughout life to really think about the words, you know, as you say them and as you see them, that black, black lives do matter and that it's not just something that sounds good or something that's catchy or a hashtag, but that it's truly a call for, there are human beings on this earth whose lives aren't valued the same as others and who are treated so carelessly that they're under attack and that we have to constantly remind people that our lives do indeed matter. So I encourage everyone to continue thinking about that, continue, you know, making the change, changes that you can do personally to, to make the world, you know, safer for black people and to keep- and to keep Jacob Blake and others, you know, in your hearts as you move forward throughout your day. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Dos, for those very important and thoughtful words. Moving on to Trustee, Trustee Hinckley. Trustee Hinckley, I believe you're muted.
Okay. FYI, it says the host has to unmute people if anyone else had that problem. I also want to thank the teachers for all the incredible work that they've done. I'm in the middle of putting together a class that starts tomorrow, and remote learning is an incredible amount of work to put together. And what I saw my kids doing today was really impressive. And I know there were a lot of hiccups that some people had, others had a really smooth day. I'm sure we'll all be swapping places in that space of technological success as we go through the year. So one thing I've been thinking a lot about is just what burden this is for our students and the stress that I know my own kids felt anticipating this day, and which I saw mostly as they were so relieved that the day went well and that this seems like an arrangement that's going to work for them. And I'm just so mindful of the experiences that they're having watching the news and the politics and the kinds of violence that Trustee Dos just described, and a pandemic and the wildfires. And I just think this is going to be a year when we really need to hold each other up a lot. And our students in particular, to be really mindful that they're seeing a world in which adults seem not able to control the circumstances in which children are learning or growing up. And I just am looking forward to this community, you know, growing in strength over the next year and really being able to look out for each other and be gentle with each other and help each other through the inevitable glitches that are going to happen, like nobody being able to join this meeting when it first started. So I just am hopeful that we'll keep this spirit and have sort of positive hope for the future as we get deeper into the school year.
Thank you very much, Trustee Hinckley. We move now to our student board member reports.
Thank you. Yeah, I had the same problem you were having, Sarah. But yeah, so this was a couple of weeks ago, but the school year for 2019, 2020 yearbooks were finally passed out in a socially distanced and safe manner at the high school. So the class of 2020 was able to get one last memento from their senior year. As you all know, we started school today. All K through 12 students returned via Zoom. And although it is and will be an adjustment, classes went fairly smoothly for the most part. Mainly, teachers read through syllabi, participated in icebreakers, as one normally would on the first day of school, and are also given technology training in Zoom, Google Classroom, and other platforms used for virtual learning. And lastly, a shout out to the high school counselors who came back a week early to start working on student scheduling and student support and other various tasks. They had a lot to do, especially with this revised schedule and some teacher adjustments as well. And they really pulled through for the student body at the high school. So thanks to them.
And then student leadership at AHS held their first meetings to discuss plans for the upcoming year, which is going to include virtual student engagement events and staff appreciation initiatives, which is very much needed based on how smoothly the first day went. And just from attending all my classes, you could tell how much care and thought the teachers put into their lesson plans. And then also, AOSD is offering the meal pickup option for remote learning. And they sent out a survey, which if done, will allow for an estimate of how many students wish to utilize the service, which is in your emails.
President Tchutain. There's another group we were remiss that we want to pay a special thanks to because they've been working all weekend and weekends leading up to the opening of school. And I'm going to turn that shout out over to our Assistant Superintendent, Marie Williams, who would recognize this special group.
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Wells. So in my, I was hasty and was remiss in mentioning our amazing IT department, Eric and Dan and Eng. The three of them have been making sure that folks have Chromebooks. We got new Zoom accounts, which is sort of what is accounting for some of the hiccups we're experiencing because we're trying to create secure learning environments for students and staff. So I'm taking notes about all of the little glitches that are occurring so that we can solve that for the next meeting. But I do just want to say to Eng and to Eric and to Dan, who have been everywhere, dropping off Chromebooks, setting up hotspots. Today, we had some issues at the high school, and Eric was there with that machinery. So they've just done a really great job. Remote learning doesn't happen without remote learning tools. And those folks really have stepped up. There are a couple fewer people in that department than there were last year. So they are carrying a very heavy burden. And so thank you, Dr. Wells, for giving me just a moment to recognize our outstanding IT department. I hope that they're watching and know how much we all appreciate all of their great efforts. Thank you.
I'm so glad we remembered to do that because they are essential workers in this time. I would like to move to persons to address the Board on Matters Not on the Agenda. So if you're an attendee and would like to speak on something that's not listed on our agenda tonight, now is the time to raise your hand. I do see that we have a couple of speakers. Let me see. We can go ahead and take these comments right now. I believe I can give you, I'd like to give you two minutes because we started the meeting so much later than expected. So I hope that will be adequate. If not, we can revisit. Okay, I think that Mr. Bergman is our first speaker. Go ahead, please.
Hi. Can you guys hear me? So anyways, my daughter goes to Marin. We have issues with our Chromebooks. Several parents had to log in on their personal computers for today's first class because the pages won't load. But my daughter also has an IEP, and part of it is one-on-one in person. And so with that, we know the guidance is going to come soon. But my daughter, when it comes to the language arts stuff, struggles. She wasn't able to do her sentence writing today. It's a problem. It's been a problem where she's had early bird, one-on-one classes with teachers that specialize in that. So we do need the paraeducators because she's going to fall behind. Also, we see a specialist to do evaluations on her eyes for tracking and stuff like that. So we have doing stuff beyond what the school district offers and stuff because the visual stuff is a part of the whole thing when she gets tired and stuff. She has ADHD, sensory overload with noise and sound. The staff that we've had at Marin has been excellent. But with the cuts, we know it's going to suffer, and we want to stay ahead of this before she falls behind. Because if we don't get the resources, those students, when we're in face-to-face classes, can be a little more disruptive, and it affects every student who doesn't have an IEP because the teacher has to get pulled away to address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Our next speaker is Mr. Chris Knight. Please go ahead, Mr. Knight.
Yes, thank you. So Chris Knight, co-president of Albany Teachers Association. And tonight, I speak on behalf of Albany's teachers. At the last board meeting, a number of hurtful things were said about Albany's teachers and public school system, both by board members and members of the public. Since then, ATA leadership has worked diligently in public and private forums to address the misunderstandings at the root of these criticisms. Albany's teachers are unwavering in our beliefs. Our commitment to our students and families is, as always, to deliver an excellent education. Whether virtual or in person, we are ready to meet this challenge. To the parents in our community, we want you to know that our educators have spent many, many hours preparing for virtual instruction, attending professional development, creating websites, videos, and lesson plans, and learning and adapting new programs and ways of teaching. We are prepared to deliver the best remote learning that we can. And when it's safe to do so, we can't wait to return to our classrooms and deliver that same Albany quality in person. To the students, it was so good to see you again today. We missed you and can't wait to collaboratively master unique opportunities and challenges in this new learning environment. We hope you enjoy our new apps, websites, and lesson designs. School will never be quite the same. To the school board, Stephen and I have started a plan to reach out to all of you in the next few weeks. We started with Ms. Duran last week and appreciated the opportunity to sit down and learn from each other. We need to ensure that we all have accurate information about the beliefs and actions of our teachers and board members in order to work together as a community to best serve our students. It is a core belief of ATA that high-quality, publicly-funded, and accessible education is the best hope for equity, justice, and democracy in this country. We look forward to engaging in this essential work together. Thank you.
President Tchutain. I feel compelled to respond, and I want to be crystal clear as your superintendent, that to our teachers, ATA, I want you to know that we appreciate you, we honor you, and we realize that it's because of you and your amazing work and what you do for kids every single day to make a difference in their life that Albany is a special place. And we want you to know that. And that's why it's important that I pause and let you know and hear from me that our sentiment is just a big thank you for what you do each and every day. And today, with just one small reminder of how special you are and how grateful we are to have such wonderful, amazing teachers. Thank you, President Tchutain.
I will just remind the board briefly that the board is not allowed to comment on Matters Not on the Agenda. And so we'll need to move on to our next speaker, Ms. Cheryl Thies. Please go ahead, Ms. Thies.
Hi, everybody. Just a quick thing. I know we're going to talk about special education later, but this is an all-education point. First of all, thank you to all of our teachers. We could not do it without you, and not just the teachers, everybody on the teams. We have all been excited about coming back to school, and I've heard from lots of parents. I work as an education advocate. And this idea of using breakout rooms is one of the current innovations that everybody loves. I just want to remind us, especially as we think about how we can bring all of our paraeducators back, that having kids unsupervised in breakout rooms online is a little bit risky. So when students with disabilities, students who bring various diversities to the table are in these breakout rooms, I'm hearing this is not something I've heard at Albany, but from other districts, of sometimes hurtful comments to the student with disability by a peer, you know, "Why don't you get it?" or "You're stupid," or whatever. So I just want to emphasize that one way we can use these paras and parent volunteers and anybody else that we can bring all hands on deck, we need to make sure that we wouldn't ask, you know, six middle schoolers to go out on the field unsupervised, especially if there were more vulnerable students in that group, and just work and then come back. So please, let's make sure we supervise these breakout rooms. I'm really concerned about the bullying and the issues of, once a student feels that they can't access or that they've been insulted or that they can't participate, it's hard to unring the bell. So the more we can do upfront to make sure these are positive experiences, the better it's going to be. And we're all learning as we go. So it's a really important point I wanted to raise. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Thies. And thanks to all of our speakers. At this point in time, I would like to move to a very special item, which is a student report. And I would like to hand this over to our student board members so that they can introduce item number 11-1, Diversify Our Narrative Student and Staff Discussion.
Yeah, so Diversify Our Narrative is a nationwide student-led initiative that targets both public and private schools in the U.S., although mainly public, to expand curriculum with diverse and anti-racist texts. And their mission or purpose for this is to encourage a productive dialogue in the classroom on race and identity among student bodies across the country by including racially diverse and anti-racist texts in the United States classrooms, mainly doing so through English and history classes.
And the Albany chapter of Diversify Our Narrative specifically is a group of seven students who have worked with the community and teachers and other students to create a petition and a resource list. And their presentation tonight highlights six requests, which is featured in the backup information. And they've been working since June. So we look forward to their presentation tonight.
Thank you so much. I'm going to start sharing my screen. Oh, if... Let's see. It says that the host has disabled screen sharing.
Okay, give me one moment, and I'll try to fix that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ms. Yueta, while we're waiting for that to resolve, would you like to introduce the group? Okay.
Hi, everyone. I hope you're all doing well amidst these times. We want to start by thanking you for meeting with us today. In this presentation, we'll go over Diversify Our Narrative and our proposal. Next slide, please. I'll quickly introduce myself. I'm Maryam Gohar. I'm a Rising Junior, and I'm the board communicator for Albany Diversify Our Narrative. I personally found this chapter through Zora and Instagram, and it was immediately intrigued and joined. We all believe that the public education system has great power, as well as duty, to educate on the continuous injustices, whether they range from microaggressions to systemic ones. There are many ways in which this should be done, one of them being by incorporating specific texts that promote an actively aware and anti-racist community. Next slide, please. So to begin, Diversify Our Narrative is a student-led initiative which actively fights racism in the classroom by implementing at least one book in high school literature classes by a person of color that's about their experience. By this integration, our hope is that a productive and essential dialogue is created and encouraged about race and identity. This mission is of extreme importance since schools have immense power and obligation to educate and inform about race and anti-racism via using proper curriculum. The creation of Dawn was created by two Stanford students, and it's a student-led initiative by them. After the numerous events of police brutality against Black communities, Jasmine Nguyen and Caitlin Zhao were both appalled, yet sadly not surprised, by the systemic and systematic injustices which many continue to face collectively and with determined Collectively and with determination, we hope that this initiative is a step towards lasting and necessary change. Next slide, please. We currently acknowledge the efforts you've already taken towards such goals, such as teacher freedom, books by people of color in upper classes, and approved texts. So thank you for that. We've also communicated with every English teacher in the district and noted what is currently taught. While approving books and teaching upperclassmen is a good step, it's not enough. And we must go beyond these first steps in order to ensure the needed change to happen. Additionally, we want to highlight our prioritization of main units/Socratic seminars for predominantly white authors and literature, placing the focus around the mainly white experience reveals the problematic nature of these classes. We want to stress the importance of creating the necessary room for BIPOC authors to be read and discussed. It's also important to acknowledge experiences beyond death and trauma. Current historic classics are extremely important, and we certainly don't want to replace them. We just want to add more that better suffice modern-day issues and experiences. While these texts and short stories are important, they surely don't encapsulate the whole narrative. Next slide, please. We're in agreement with your mission statement, which empowers all and offers comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe environment. There's still so much more we need to do collectively and continuously to better fulfill the statement. This is an opportunity which precisely does that. As a student body, many have seen and have sadly experienced the negative effects of lacking this crucial information and representation. We're beyond confident that we need this and more. Zora Ueta-Hale will be your next speaker.
Okay. Thank you so much for allowing our team to present to you today. Now that you've gotten a brief overview of the original campaign, I'm going to introduce our district-specific petition, share some student testimonials, and give some examples of diverse literature. But first, a quick introduction about myself. My name is Zora Ueta-Hale, and I'm the co-district representative for the Albany-Dawn chapter. I discovered the original "Diversify Our Narrative" campaign through Instagram and was immediately intrigued by their petition and goals. I decided to join as an organizer because I believe that education is an extremely important part of a person's lifelong development. While working on this campaign, I've definitely gained a deeper understanding of the systemic racism and anti-Blackness that is still incredibly pervasive in Albany, including our schools. Though there's a great deal of work to be done, changing the single-story narrative is one way we can work towards a supportive, representative, and accepting environment for all. So as Miriam stated before, the AUSD mission statement aims to empower all and create a safe learning environment. And in my personal experience, and those of many others we have communicated with, this mission has not been always fully accomplished. So in the next few slides, I will share three anonymous testimonials from former and current BIPOC students recalling their experiences within Albany Unified School District. We received far over three testimonials. However, for the sake of time, we will only be sharing three. We hope these will open your eyes to the injustices taking place in our community and schools. And just before we begin, we want to make sure we acknowledge the courage that comes with sharing something so personal and traumatic. So thank you for trusting us with your experience if you shared. And even if you didn't share your story, we would like you to know that it is always valid. This first testimonial comes from a Peruvian and Mexican Latinx student. This student said, quote, "Before I moved to Albany, I lived in a predominantly Latinx and Black neighborhood. The schools that I went to was very diverse. When I came to Albany and joined schools here, things were very different. I walked into my class on the first day of school, and I noticed that absolutely no one looked like me. I felt like an outsider. And what does a young person who feels other do? In my case, I rejected my Latinx identity and subconsciously assimilated. I've struggled to regrasp my identity since then. It took meeting other people at school that had a similar experience to me. And guess what? Due to the lack of diversity in Albany schools, I've only been able to relate to one person who has a similar experience of rejecting their Latinx identity. This is unacceptable," end quote. This second testimonial comes from a Black student. They stated, quote, "When I was a freshman, I was sitting in Spanish when I saw a text from my friend. I read it, and it said, 'Hey, we are roasting you right now.' I immediately thought WTF and questioned what he meant by that. That was when he replied, 'Your skin looks like it's been roasted too much.' My heart immediately dropped, and I sat there in disbelief. He then sent me another text that asked if what he sent to me was racist. I, of course, told him it was, and that was when he responded, 'I was roasting you for having hell-a-dark skin, not for being Black.' Never been in a situation like this, I had no idea how to act or even what to say, especially to someone I had called my friend. The text kept getting worse as he tried to explain himself, saying things like, 'Half my friends are Black, and the music I listen to is by Black artists.' And it kept getting worse. He then sent me a link to a YouTube video on how fat girls ruin everything because he found out that I wanted to go to school about this. I remember not knowing what to do and feeling completely dehumanized, as well as helpless. He made me feel like I was overreacting, which I knew I wasn't. My mom found out about the situation and told me to go to the vice principal. I told the VP about the situation and even printed out screenshots of the conversation. A few days after, the VP called me and the guy down to their office to sit and talk through the situation. At the time, I did not want to be in the same room with him, let alone hear empty apologies from him. The worst part about it was after making me listen to his apologies, the VP made me apologize for overreacting. I left that room more broken than when I had entered it. Now I know I should have fought harder for something to be done. The school swept what happened to me under the rug, along with countless other stories and situations as well," end quote. And our third testimonial comes from a Black alumni. This individual included over 12 separate incidents in their testimonial, but I'm only going to share a few. And before I start, I want to give a trigger warning that they do reference suicide at one point in their reflection. This alumni stated, quote, "When I raised my hand to speak in class, people would comment that I was very well-spoken and asked why I didn't talk Black. When white people asked about my ethnicity, which happens all the time, and I would answer that my mom was white and my dad was Black, people would say things like, 'You're so lucky you're light-skinned, and you got the good hair.'" I could go on and on about the culture of white supremacy and anti-Blackness that exists at Albany. I graduated feeling worthless and had no self-confidence. I often contemplated suicide during high school, especially when incidents such as these happened, and my parents wouldn't let me transfer. I congratulate myself every day for succeeding, despite Albany's best efforts to ensure that I did it," end quote. And lastly, we would like to share one of our own experiences as a group that occurred while working on this Dawn campaign. So on August 21st, a Dawn organizer found one of our flyers that we had put up crumpled on the ground near the AHHS baseball field with the words "Black Lives Murder" written on it. This hateful and racist act is obviously horrific, and it pains us to see all our hard work be belittled and disrespected in this manner. We hope this experience will be a wake-up call, conveying the dramatic amount of work that still needs to be done. All of these testimonials that I just shared should bother you and make you feel uncomfortable. School should be a safe place for all students, no matter any aspect of their identity. And when students are being denied their identity, shown little respect by teachers and peers alike, and graduate feeling worthless, our district and school board has failed its purpose. We cannot ignore this problem for any longer, just like we cannot forget the unacceptable racist Instagram account of 2016. Because for many of the affected Black students, faculty, and families, they can't. So instead of trying to put it in the past or view as an independent, one-time occurrence, we should consider what allowed it to happen. And rather than denying it, we can instead focus on what actions we can take right now to make certain that something in that manner never happens again. We think the demands listed in our petition are good first steps in making Albany a safer and more inclusive space for everyone. I will now carry out an overview of the main demands listed in our petition. One, we demand a minimum of at least two books by a person of color and about a person of color's experience be taught in every Albany high school and middle school English/Literature and Comprehension class. And additionally, we demand that at least two pieces of media be taught in AUSD elementary schools at every grade level. And this specific change from books to general media was intended to address the differences in reading comprehension and learning at a younger age. Two, we demand teachers must have the autonomy to choose books from the recommended list provided, or if the chosen text satisfies Education Code 6002, Article III. And three, we demand at least one of the mandated books be by a Black author about the Black experience. Four, we demand this implementation be enforced not only in all standard English classes, but alternatives for standard English classes, such as AP/IB programs. Five, we demand that these texts be analyzed to the same extent that any other traditional text would be analyzed in the classroom. And lastly, we demand that one or more of the actions listed below be taken by the teachers to ensure these texts and media are taught correctly. Our chapter of "Diversify Our Narrative" would be more than willing to meet with English teachers to address their concerns. The recommended actions are as follows. Teachers can hold department meetings/briefings about how to effectively communicate these messages to their students. They can get feedback and information from students about how they should address these subjects and/or utilize other online curricula on how to effectively and appropriately teach about race and racism. Now, we wanted to give two examples of diverse literature we regard as valuable and beneficial for each individual level of AUSD education. We've included both nonfiction and fiction resources. And we won't go in depth to describe each book, but we just wanted to give a few quick examples. Starting with high school. "Just Mercy" by Brian Stevenson gives an insightful look into the Black experience within the South, and specifically, capital punishment within our unjust criminal justice system. "Ceremony" by Leslie M. Silco provides a mixed-race experience of a white and indigenous man returning from his time serving in World War II. Moving on to middle school. #NotYourPrincess elevates the voices of indigenous women across North America, shedding light on the oppression and experiences that have been routinely silenced. "Out of My Mind" by Sharon M. Draper tells the story of a Black girl with cerebral palsy, displaying the importance of acknowledging intersectionality. And lastly, elementary school. We have Fred Korematsu's "Speaks Up" by Laura Atkins and Stan Yogi, which tells the famous story of Fred Korematsu, a Japanese-American man who stood up for his rights during the Japanese internment camps of World War II. And the last book is "Marisol McDonald Doesn't Match" or "Marisol McDonald No Combinna" by Monica Brown, which is the story of a mixed-race Latina girl struggling to accept her identity. And this picture book is told in both Spanish and English. These are only a few examples of the many books on the recommended resource list that we are encouraging teachers to choose from when adopting these demands listed in our petition. So in conclusion, from July 14th, when we first released the petition, to today, August 25th, we have gotten 979 signatures from Albany students, alumni, parents, teachers/educators, and residents. We believe this shows the extensive support and need in this community for this long-awaited change. And we are by no means claiming that this one petition will solve the problem of systemic racism within our school district. However, we believe the process needs to begin somewhere, and this is a concrete step we can take. And although there have been some previous efforts to diversify our curriculum, these have been mostly focused at the high school level. And our petition aims to implement this change at all levels, K through 12, which we feel is absolutely crucial. And we acknowledge the difficulties of this time as a global pandemic is not an easy time for anyone. Nevertheless, we cannot keep delaying this movement and essential change. The longer we delay, the number of students who have never felt completely accepted or heard in Albany will grow. And thinking back to the testimonials, is that the impact that we want Albany schools to have? As high school students ourselves, we want better. And we genuinely believe that we can do better as a school district and overall community. Thank you so much for your time. Julian Johnson will be your presenter for the next section.
Hi, everyone. I have a few final pieces of information to add to this presentation. But before I get to that, I'm going to quickly introduce myself. My name is Julian Johnson, and I'm another co-district representative for our branch of "Diversify Our Narrative." I found Dawn through Instagram, and I really liked that this was a student-led group taking concrete steps to bring about important change. I signed up because I felt that schools all around the country's curricula must be updated to avoid telling only a single story, Albany schools included. Through this work, I hope to help bring about change in education that will make the whole Albany community more supportive. Next slide, please. Just to quickly summarize what Miriam and Zora have already gone over, we are very glad that the Albany school system has taken steps to ensure that we are getting diverse information. However, there is still a long way to go, and we must strive to create an environment where everyone feels safe and supported at our schools. Implementing our demands for the English department will be one step towards creating that environment. Again, we would be happy to work with teachers to develop curriculum and teaching methods. And we could also help to look into online reading materials, thinking of distance learning. Next slide, please. Like I said, implementing these demands is a step towards creating a supportive school environment, but it's still only one step towards that goal. In the future, we'll be demanding more changes be made, such as updating and diversifying the history curriculum, making ethnic studies a required course in high school, and diversifying the teacher hiring process. Thanks so much again for your time. If you have any questions or comments, feel free to make a public comment at this meeting. If you don't feel comfortable making a public comment, but you still want to contact us, you can direct message us on Instagram at diversifyournarrative.ausd or email us at ausddon@gmail.com. Thank you.
President Tutain, are you there?
I am. I was just going to say wow, but I think I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Wells, if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, I was getting a little choked up at hearing something so refreshing by some courageous students of ours who just make us all proud from having the courage to do something to make a difference. And I don't want this to fall on deaf ears. I want us to make their recommendation a reality. I'm going to offer that we have an opportunity to meet with our students to help support this wonderful recommendation so that we can make a difference and continue to try to make a difference in our part of the world that can spread out throughout the world. But what you guys did today, Miriam, Zora, and Julian, was simply amazing and made me very proud of what you've done. Historically, change came about through our youth and youngsters. And you guys just epitomize what... Everything that makes the word "great," "great." And you did this on your own volition because you wanted to do something humanitarian for all people. Because learning the history and respecting the rich culture for everyone that come from different parts of the world originally is critically important. And when you know our history, like you do, about the racism and the ramifications of racism today that we see in our institutions that are, if we had to call it out, institutionalized racism and all the bias that goes with being a person of color. To have our youth recognize that the time is now. It's no need to wait till we reach that legal age, but our voice matter. And tonight, this is an opportunity for you to have your voice tonight, and any night you want to have it. What I want to caution us about being very careful to have a response here to try to justify our current position. But sometime, we just need to sit down and listen. And this is one of the times where we need to listen to our youth and go from there. And I'm hoping this part concludes our presentation by our youth And I'm hoping this part concludes our presentation by our youth because they initiated this. We however might want to have a summary at the end from maybe our president, but I think that would suffice because I don't want to make the error of disputing any of you guys because I believe what you do and I know what you're doing is the right thing. So thank you for your courage. I encourage you to keep on keeping on with what you're doing. And if you're looking for an ally, you got one right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Yeah, as with all reports, I bring this back to the board. So if the board has any questions or comments, now is the time.
I have a couple of comments and requests. First, I just would like to say, thank you. I really appreciate everything that you guys said. And I think that, and apologies in order, but I want to explain why. Apologies in order, and the reason why is because even though it's exceptional that you guys put this together and that you guys did it, you shouldn't have had to. There are people in place that should have been doing this work, and you shouldn't have had to do it, but I'm glad you did. And with that being said, I would like to take these, these, these demands. I'd like to frame them as recommendations. And we have a task force in place, the task force is in place to address certain issues. I think that we can take on these demands. We can use that and address each one of them through that, through that task force, put together a detailed list of exactly what you guys would like to see. Have my own input as well and some ideas, I think, and then bring that back to the board for the board to be able to discuss and vote on and then get these implemented. You know, the time for just kind of talking about things and then having another meeting to talk about more things and then another meeting to talk about those things that we just talked about. At that time, as we're, as we're continuing to do that, more people are being hurt and more people are missing the opportunity to learn. So, so what I would like to do is put these together and then put this together for the board to go over and to actually vote and then give the instruction to implement this. So, so that is my, that's what I'm gonna do as far as this goes to get this done. And you guys will be a part of that. I encourage you to work with us on that, and we'll get this done. Thank you.
Other board, Vice President Daron?
Yes, I first wanted to say I'm just so excited. I, it's been hard for me to just sit here and listen because I want to jump up and down. This is such important work, and you students, your voices are so powerful. And you need to be engaged all the time with us. It's, it's really important. You bring what education is, the, the living thing of what it means to our meetings, and, and that's so important. I just really want to see more student participation. I want to, to share with you some interesting data because as soon as, as Maryam had reached out to the board, I started doing some research. And I, I have some data because as we know, data is really key. As you presented tonight, the voices that you presented and, and what you request for, and certainly the superintendent has mentioned data as being very key as we move forward. So I put together a couple of slides, and I wanted to see if Ms. Chen would be willing to put those on right now so you could look at those slides. In terms of, I had wanted to support every single word that you say and the concepts. And so I, I put this together. Now, this is based on a couple of literature lists that have been put together by the district. And I just put here the high school population here in Albany to once again say that there is diversity in, in Albany. And we definitely, our curriculum needs to be so much more inclusive. I think there's some disconnects though, because I just wanted to go through this with you. This was the adoption of literature novels for Albany High School in June of 2018. And I, I basically decided to do it by the focus or, or the subject area, and so like experiences, et cetera. So in this, in that, in those literature pieces, there was, you could see the percentages of the focus of the experiences in these literature novels. Number two was an addendum, or it was added to that adoption list stating that texts at Albany High, these are texts that have been for some time and should have been added to the approved list. I did not in any way want to, you know, give you the whole list again because I thought somehow that was going to be presented tonight. But nevertheless, in that, at that time in the 2018, what texts had been at Albany High for some time and, and they wanted to be sure that it was added to the approved list, the focus was eighty-two, on eighty-two percent white experiences and eighteen percent African-American. And I also noted, because it was just so startling, the male-female imbalance in terms of the authors. And then just this summer, there have been now recommended or suggested high school literature. And as you can see by the percentages of the focus, you can see them here. Okay? And then these, number two, if you could scroll down just a little bit. This was, okay, the, I'm sorry, number one was on the nonfiction, and there were twenty-two books, and then number two is fiction, and there were twenty-two books. And once again, the focus or the subject, you can see the, the different composition here. Okay? And then we're going to go to the literature that was recommended in June, July nineteen of 2020 for the recommended literature for Albany Middle School. And the first one has to do with the fourteen nonfiction books. Ms. Chen, can you go to the second slide? Okay, and you can see what was there for the nonfiction books that were recommended for the middle school. And then you see in number two, the focus or the subject for the thirty-two fiction books, and you can see those percentages. Then we move to D, which is the suggested elementary school media. And once again, one, the focus for the nine, nine nonfiction books and, and the subjects. And then number two would be the fiction books, and there were eighteen books highlighted. And in reviewing some of that literature of, of these books over the, the last couple of recommendations, the core, what was highlighted as the core books, I just wanted to note that several of them were from the nineteen nineties and one dated as far back as nineteen sixty-three. So that was quite a ways ago, and I definitely wanted to note that. Okay, thank you, Ms. Chen, for that. So sort of in conclusion, and my main points basically in, in, in looking at this literature curriculum, I wanted to say first that Albany has started to do work around diversity of literature. And, and I think that's an exciting place to start because literature is just, oh, there's so much out there on, on, in terms of diversity. And, and I think I wanted to note that here, there was, there's numerous examples of black writers. And, and that's wonderful because that literature truly can take your breath away. At the same time, as we continue those efforts, I would really want us to look at increasing the number of other us writers of color in this literature recommendations, et cetera. The other thing I wanted to mention was that during Albany Coming Together, which happened after the Instagram incident at the high school in 2017, during the summer, I was the chair of the Elementary Curriculum Committee. And I took the opportunity that summer, and I read and have documented here over two hundred books from TK, pre-K to, to fifth grade for students. Now, I'm not saying that my recommendation should be included, but these were some things that, that was part of the ACT recommendations, and they've sort of been sitting with me since. And, and I would really love to get that out, maybe to the students or certainly wherever it belongs in the district because I think that would be worthwhile for consideration too. So I guess in closing, I just want to say that, that there is still a lot of work to be done. And I am willing and happy and excited to, to work with you students and/or to work with whoever in the district is ultimately going to be working on this. I think my last point is that things are complex, and sometimes we can create lots of these lists, but there's a disconnect sometimes, I think, between making recommendations and then how truly they're implemented in the classroom. Because some of these recommendations were there when you interviewed some of these students who should in fact have read some of this literature from authors of color. But somehow it sounds like, based on, on what you were saying, that it didn't really happen, that students didn't get those rich experiences in their English literature classes. So I just want us to be really cognizant of some kind of disconnect that's possible and that we really do due diligence in the future and be sure that we are providing for all of our students the, the kind of curriculum that is meaningful and relevant to them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Daron. Are there, trustee Hinckley? Go ahead.
I just first want to thank all the effort that went into putting this narrative out into the community and getting all the signatures and dragging the adults behind you. I really appreciate what a student and youth-led effort this is. I share Vice President Daron's, I think, concern that we, having the literature, which we know is already in some of the classrooms, is not enough. And it asks for, you know, one or two pieces of material for elementary school kids by authors of color. That's obviously completely insufficient, given the diversity of our society and community. And I trust that our teachers are already providing a significantly more diverse curriculum. At least I know that my kids have exposed, been exposed to that. But I think the fact that this petition comes to us through students who have been to Albany makes your point, which is that it, whatever is happening is not making people feel at home and welcome. And even one of the testimonials that you gave sort of speaks to that, that we have students who will say, well, I've read these books. I listen to these musicians. I like, you know, I watch sports with black athletes or whatever. And so I, what I'm hearing sort of as a thread is that it, it's not just about putting the books on the shelves. And as Vice President Daron said, it's not just about putting them in the classroom. So I, I raised this just because I know how the board, school boards work and districts work, and we could move this along and fulfill all of the demands that you ask for in your petition, and nothing might change. And so I really just want to sort of lift up, I think, the bigger point here, which is that a diverse set of books on the shelf of the classroom doesn't, doesn't necessarily lead to a welcoming environment for everyone or to an anti-racist classroom. So I think what I'd like to ask, and we have, you know, seen sort of efforts like this, I think, been diluted in the past, the ACT work that Vice President Daron referred to. So I think what I'd like to ask for is that some of the follow-up we get from staff is, one, a real sort of education for the board about what the curriculum really looks like for students as they make their way through K through twelve. What are they being exposed to? And in a way that allows us to understand how kids are actually experiencing this as a, as a whole curriculum. Because I think just knowing what books teachers can choose from doesn't give us the full sense of the message that children are getting as they go through and as they internalize whose experiences are more valued. So I, I guess my main point is that I'd like for staff to sort of bring this back to us, not just as a yes or no on these demands, but as a, taking this as a first step to a deeper look at the experiences of students in the classroom. And maybe the new task force is one way to move that forward. But I think this is a perennial issue that clearly Albany has a lot of work to do on, as I'm sure does every district. But thank you again for bringing this forward and for making it so public in the community because I think we do need everyone to be thinking about this in the classroom and outside.
I would just like to, or where are you gonna go, Jacob?
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, thank you. I would just like to sort of provide a clarification on behalf, on behalf of DON, and you guys can feel free to correct me if I'm speaking out of pocket on this, but just to reiterate some of the, the demands that I see in, in this initiatives that has been different from prior years. And, and the main ones are that, you know, Diversify Our Narrative recognizes that, you know, despite, as Clementina showed us, despite this diverse set of texts that we have on our, on our book lists, that, that these issues are still rampant at Albany. And I think one of the, one of the biggest sort of clarifications that I could provide from a student perspective is that despite having all these books in our lists, despite having sort of this like breakdown where we've tried to, to focus on narratives of people of color, as was in the 2018 initiative, is that for me, like whatever, whatever the reading list was, I did not read a book by a black author until junior year. And from what I can remember, the only book with a black character other than Of Mice and Men, which I do not want to talk about, was Othello. And I think that although race is a, a big part of, of that play and the way it was written and the way the characters interact, it was not as big a part of the dialogue in class surrounding that as, as it could have been. And I think that's something that Diversify Our Narrative speaks on in their, in their sixth demand in which they, they hope to, to work with teachers on how to effectively communicate the messages, which has not been successfully done at Albany so far, despite the reading lists. I'd, I'd also like, like to emphasize that, you know, this is like, Diversify Our Narrative, again, this is, this is coming across every, every again, this is this is coming across every 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 grade, every every school, K through 12. And I think that that one of one of the biggest failures of the 2018 initiative was focusing solely on updating a reading list for the high school and and not throughout the entire district. Because to say to to say that that there is there is a culture of racism and anti-blackness at Albany is is really an understatement. It but yeah, I mean, just from from reading other other testimonials and from from hearing personal stories, many of them do not come from the high school, but but from as young as as middle school and and elementary. And so I think that it's that's really important to note. Like trustee Hinckley and Vice President Duran were saying, were that although these books are present on the reading lists, we need to make sure that there is a follow-through, that each book is taught, that it's that it's mandatory in each class, that it's not just available for selection as State in Demand 1, and that the the dialogue and the analysis of each book is centered around these messages of of anti-racism and post-colonialism and whatnot, as 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 really stated in Demands 5 and 6. So I'd just like to 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 put out that reminder out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Board Member Corso Clark. I'd like to move to trustee Clark now, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure Student Board Member Malaa did not want to go first?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, yeah, as I do often, I will save my remarks for the end. I'd like to hear from the public. I see we have quite a few hands up. But obviously, if Student Board Member Malaa would like to speak now, too, that would be fine. But I like to hold my comments till the end sometimes.
Okay, yeah, I'm I can I'm happy to speak. I think that in addition to what Leo was saying, there being a disconnect between like the the curriculum, I I do want to like appreciate that our teachers have tried to to implement anti-racist texts, and there has been a step towards that. But what this these this group of DON students are doing is just pushing that further and showing from a student perspective the ways that this can be implemented in a in a more effective way. So that's all I had to say. I I really appreciate all the the work that our students have put in to make this presentation go so well. And I appreciate the board for being so respectful and and appreciative of of that work.
Thank you, Board Member Malaa. My my personal take, well, like I already said, my my comment was just wow, that was really an incredible presentation. And the work that you've done is is very solid, and we will take it to the next step. But I before I open it up for public comment, I I believe that the that that your team has worked over the summer with some of our librarians that helped create your list. And I wanted to elevate our high school librarian to to a panelist briefly because I believe that Mishar wanted to speak for a moment. You know, I moving things into the into the accepted curriculum, that's that's basically, I think, a legal process that the board must be involved with. And one thing that we can do much more quickly, I think, is support the work of our school librarians because I think you've generated excitement by putting this list together. And I would like to first see if the district can make sure that that these recommended texts are easily available at the library because people are going to want to read them and people are going to be asking about these now. So with that, it looks like Mishar is ready to talk to us.
Hi there, President Tchutain. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. And can you see my slideshow? Fantastic. Okay. After today, taking a deep breath, and I want to thank you, President Tchutain, for inviting the AUSD libraries to share our support, our strong support, our incredible support, our huge hurrares for Diversify Our Narrative and the efforts for conducting our students with diverse authors and books. This is integral to the work that we do as librarians, that we do as educators. My name is Mary Ann Schoyer, and I am the librarian at Albany High School. I am here speaking on behalf of all of the teacher librarians in Albany Unified. We have worked together on this presentation. I would like to begin by telling you about one of our middle school students. Hold on, I gotta figure out how I do Zoom. Okay, there we go. I'd like to begin by telling you about one of our middle school students. Last year, he was so excited to bring Jason Chigga, his favorite comic book author, to visit a BAMS Comic Book Club, that he held a lemonade stand over the summer to raise money for it. What makes a kid so excited about bringing an author to school that he went and raised money on his own for it? Well, you see, this student had been following Jason Chigga's work for several years. He loved reading these comics. Jason is funny, he's a mathematician, and he's an artist. I describe him as an engineer as well. He creates complex choose-your-own storylines. We were able to bring Jason to AMS, and he taught the kids how to make folded choose-your-own comics. He was so creative. This type of experience really offers something different for our students, something connected to their passions and their identities. While race isn't central, a central part of Jason's storylines, it is crucial that we hear from creators and share with our students role models from different ethnic backgrounds. Our libraries have played and continue to play an essential role in bringing diverse narratives to our students. A core value of libraries is to reflect the voices and identities of our students. And we are so supportive of students leading the movement, this movement, so supportive, so proud of all of the students involved in Diversify Our Narrative. The AUSD librarians have worked hard over the past 15 and more years to diversify our collections, and we are committed to continuing this work. These are some of the things we know, support, and believe. We know that the publishing industry is part of the systemic racism in our country. We support the students' push to increase the diversity of perspectives. We believe that student choice and agency is important. We hear that Albany students value diversity and representation in our libraries and in our curriculum. Our collections help expose students to a range of perspectives and viewpoints, whether it's a read aloud, a novel students discover browsing through the library, or an author students meet through an author visit. Here are just a few images of diverse authors who have come to our schools and connected with our students. Juji Morales won the Caldecott Honor Award and the Pura Belle Prey Award, Gold Award, for her beautiful biography of Frida Kahlo, Viva Frida. She came and spoke with Marin, our students. They were so lucky to hear her. Here we have Jerry Kraft, who won the Caldecott Medal. He's the first comic book author to win the gold medal, the Caldecott, and not the Caldecott, no, excuse me, the Newberry Medal. Just days before he won the Newberry Medal, he was at Albany Middle School, inspiring our students, talking about what it meant to be a new student, a black student at a school, an exclusive school. Here is Mike Jung, who did a presentation at Cornell during Book Fair Week. As a he is a Korean-American. And here we have Elizabeth Acevedo, speaking at Albany High School. I so wish I could have shown the student voices, the student pictures in this, so you could see their faces. All of the students, all of the AUSD libraries have been working overtime to find creative ways to connect and support our students with a range of voices. But we've been doing it with very little funding or support. Our elementary and middle school libraries are given no budget from the school district to purchase books or bring authors. When Elizabeth, when Elizabeth Acevedo came to Albany, I had to pull together funding from AEF, the AHSPTA, and parent donations. It was so worth it. But that fundraising time takes away from other important ways I can serve the high school students and teachers. You've seen here today the wide range of authors who have come to Albany in recent years. As the district considers the petition of Diversify Our Narrative, it is important to recognize the historical and systemic racism in the publishing industry. As librarians, we bring expertise and commitment to Albany, finding books with racial and ethnic diversity to share with our school communities. However, the only way we are able to do any of this is through community fundraising. We are very, very grateful for all of the PTA, AEF, and community support. But the lack of district funding has significant consequences. Instead of making connections with students and developing a central curriculum, we have to spend time figuring out how to get funds. When parents or students request new diverse books, we have to say, we don't have money yet. Our hope is that the board realizes our students often connect with diverse voices through the books and authors they meet in our magical spaces. We stand with diverse with our students to diversify our narrative. Our primary goal tonight is to reiterate how essential librarians are to bringing these diverse voices to our students. Thank you so much for giving us this time and giving us your support.
Thank you very much. I I would like to open this up to public comment.
Can I actually say a few words really quick, just to the things that have been said?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so just a few things I wanted to add on. Leo already said a lot of it, and Audrey already said a lot of it as well. But um, so I forget if the Vice Vice President Duran or Board trustee Hinckley mentioned this. But one thing that stood out to me in those comments was that the point that implementing our demands will not create a anti-racist environment at Albany and will not do all of that. And just one thing, my response to that is multiple times in our presentation, we acknowledge that this is one step. This is not enough. This is a starting point. So we know that just by implementing these six demands, we're not going to fix all the problems of racism at Albany. We know that. We have thought about that. We've thought about ways to deal with that. And that's what we are going to hopefully do in our future projects that we mentioned, updating the history curriculum, mandating ethnic studies, et cetera. So we know that this isn't going to fix any problem or fix the whole problem. But you, one of you also said that it wouldn't bring there's no guarantee that it would bring about any change because measures like this have happened before. Our plan is only is really only partially focused on getting those books into the bookroom and into classrooms because that's like many of you have said already, that's already been done. That's why we put such a focus on to like teacher training. We provided multiple ways to do that and actual requirements for the amount of books that need to be taught. Because as we've seen, even if these books are available, it's not, they're not necessarily taught. So I believe that would definitely make a difference, especially I have I've definitely not read two books by a person of color every year of high school, middle school, and elementary school, like. And I know many of my peers haven't either. I've read I've read some of the books that are in the bookroom. But as we said in our presentation, major units are focused on white authors. So really, getting those books approved and into the bookroom and into the classrooms is only one part of our plan. So that's basically all I, or there was one more thing actually regarding the library. I I personally think it's super important for the libraries to get funding. And but the reason that I think this, I think if those those books definitely should be put into wide distribution in the library. But those books are only going to appeal to people who want to learn about those subjects. And that's why instead of just making those widely available in the library, we're insisting that they need to be required to be taught. Because if we leave people who are uninterested in learning about these subjects behind in this movement, then we're still going to have the same problems we have today. So I think just thinking about that as we go forward and figure out a way to implement these changes that we're demanding will be beneficial. So thank you.
I think that's a really good point there. And so I wanted to add one thing to that before public comment, which is you hear that all the time when people say that, well, if you do that, I don't think it's gonna do anything, or I don't think it's gonna. But if you do nothing, then that's not going to do anything either. So I think that you have to, you know, it's building blocks, right? So you do you do this, and then that builds on to other things that you can do. So it's not saying that, like, if you if you do this, then you can't do other things. You can do this, and we can do something else. We can increase the reading there, and we can make it mandatory, you know, and things like that. So you can do, you don't have to not do anything just because you think maybe one thing won't like solve all the issues. You know, it can be an incorporation of, you know, all these ideas to try and make Albany a more inclusive place where everybody feels comfortable and can come and receive a safe, quality education. So that's all I was gonna say. I know there's a public comment, but I wanted to to add that piece.
Thank you, trustee Dos. And before we move to public comment, I do see we we have some hands up. I just wanted to 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 say to to Mr. Johnson that you you made your point very clearly. And and I think we do understand that that this is not just about adding books to the booklist. This is about getting these authors taught in the classrooms as as an integrated part of the curriculum. So I just want to let you know that I I do hear that. And I think that everybody here hears that and understands understands the goal. We have about five public comments.
Clarify something, but first. And I don't want to speak for Vice President Duran, but I think I'll assume she may want to make the same clarification that I wasn't saying this isn't going to do enough, therefore, let's not do it. I just wanted to be clear that, to me, there's so much that has to be done and that I don't want to allow us to adopt another textbook resolution and then say, okay, we've diversified our curriculum, let's move on. I just wanted to make very clear that I think this is, what you've presented is wonderful. It is the bare minimum that any district should be willing to do. And I also do just want to emphasize that, you know, people, the reason that I think Clementina, you know, mentions that we've had these these kinds of issues before is just to say, to, I think, express dissatisfaction with how the district and this board and, you know, previous boards have not made the progress that we would like to see on this issue. I did not in any way mean to imply that, well, this isn't going to change anything. Let's not do it. I just think, you know, we have a tremendous amount of work to do. I've read many of the testimonials that people have posted as part of this, and they're, you know, they're wrenching, they're incredibly painful. And I I just think many of us on the board want to acknowledge that and not allow ourselves to. many of us on the board want to acknowledge that and not allow ourselves to feel like, "Great, we've responded to a petition, you know, we're done. We'll move on to the next thing." So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thanks. And let's, let's try to get some of the public in here to speak as well. We're gonna have a two-minute per speaker. And our first speaker will be Amy Appel. Go ahead, Ms. Appel.
Hi, thank you, Board Member Tutain. Thanks to all the Diversify Our Narrative members for their activism and this impressively well-thought-out proposal. In no way do I, I mean to downplay the movement against systemic racism. It's very much one of the great issues of our time. I would like to point out that when we're diversifying our narrative, that only looking at race is actually a limited point of view. And that there are other forms of discrimination as well, having to do with disability and sex and gender identity issues. And especially as those intersect with racial and other identities. So there, for example, the disability literature is very rich. And I think, as was alluded to earlier, out of my mind, explore some of that. Where am I going with this? Anyway, I was very happy that my son read The Fifty Seven Bus. And I think that, that there, I know what you mean about the disconnect between this curriculum and actual behavior. And, you know, I find it heartening that the high school has the Identity Health and Society class for all ninth graders. That might be one way to address some of these things. And just thank you to all the students for this presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Appel. Our second commenter will be Kathleen Marte. Go ahead, please, Ms. Marte.
Thank you so much. I am the parent of a 10th grade boy who is a biracial black boy. And I strongly support this initiative. I signed it. I commend the high schoolers for putting it together. I'm so impressed. They are awesome. I'm also a teacher for Berkeley Unified School District. When I started, I've worked for other districts. When I started working there and I walked into the kindergarten rooms, I was instantly moved because you saw up on the walls, they have, the district has four rules. The typical three ones: be responsible, be reliable, be safe. The fourth one: be an ally. And that is so important. So this is my pitch for not just diversifying, but like other board members and other high schools have said, anti-racist curriculum. And it needs to start in kindergarten. I'm so saddened that the posters for George Floyd and Breonna Taylor have been torn down in our cities. And that our brown, black and brown children are bicycling through town and being called the N-word. We have to be, we have to be thoughtful, we have to be proactive. We can't just like walk around, dance around the issue and like, "Oh, multiculturalism. Oh, we're all different, we love diversity." No, we need anti-racist curriculum and anti-bullying curriculum. Students with disabilities are being bullied, and it's not okay. And so I just really want us to take action. And, because I'm sad that in Albany, there's a lot more racism than I realized. Once again, I just want to thank the high schoolers. You guys give me hope. You're awesome. And thanks for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Ueda. Go ahead, Ms. Ueda.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Yes, so I'm an eighth-grade teacher at Albany Middle School. And I just want to say that, you know, it's interesting. In my classroom, I have taught more than two books by BIPOC authors. And yet, all of these testos and all this hard work that Diversify Our Narrative has done has made me realize that's not enough. And that there's so much more that I need to do that my fellow English teachers can do, and we're ready to do it. And we're just so excited and inspired by their work. And so that's as a teacher. And then I have to say, as a mom, I am just so proud of Zora and, and her classmates for just putting on a great presentation. And thank you very, very much to the board and to Dr. Wells and Ms. Williams and everyone for giving them this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Ueda. Look forward to maybe dropping by your classroom sometime this year. Our next speaker is Jessica Rhodes. Ms. Rhodes, go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm Jessica Rhodey, formerly Jessica Park. I've been with the district for 10 years. I just got married, so name change. But I am the English Department Chair at the high school. And I just want to echo some of the things that our board members have said about how we, as a department, have been starting this work for the past few years. We don't think that this work is complete. We don't think that this work can be complete. And we fully support the students in the Diversify Our Narratives campaign. I came to this board meeting ready to talk about that high level of what's happening in the English department. Why aren't more of these books taught regularly? I'm happy to give those six slides to you today if you want that. But just in the short time that I have, I want to say that our current group or current cohort of English teachers is an open collaborative group who's really dedicated to anti-racist practices. This summer, as we were talking about diversifying our curriculum, we had so many ideas and so many texts that different teachers wanted to try. And I think, just to highlight one piece of this presentation, we know that we have growth areas in our department. We know that the ninth-grade curriculum is older and very white and needs some new life in it. In terms of the 10th-grade curriculum, we know that some of the world literature texts are older, some of those classics. And a lot of it is, to be frank, very depressing. We know that we need more narratives by Asian authors to match students who are at our schools. We know that we need narratives by LGBTQ+ people, authors, and about LGBTQ+ people. And we know that we need narratives about differently-able people. This work takes time, and we need to find those titles that we think would work in our classes. And so just to say a little bit more in these last 20 seconds, there have been some systemic factors blocking change, including the publishing industry not publishing enough texts by authors of color. We need time to build this curriculum. And we also need funding from the district to provide the numbers of books that we need to be able to teach these books to all of our classes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodey. I want to bring an issue to the board at this point, which is, Ms. Rhodey said that she had, she had a few slides that she was ready to share about English at the, at the high school. We are running about 45 minutes late at this time. And so I want to ask the board whether you would like to give Ms. Rhodey a chance to share those slides right now as part of this entire presentation? Or whether we want to reserve time at a future meeting to, to have more discussion about this, this issue? So please speak up. I want to, I want to hear the will of the board.
I would just like to say that it's such an important issue that I feel it should be, it could be another agenda item in a future board meeting. And then we could have a lot more conversation with students as well and others. So I would like to see it ongoing.
I agree. I'd like to have this be an agenda item and be able to really dive into it. But I want it to be, I want it to be, I'm trying to think of how to carefully say this because I don't want it to come across the wrong way, and I think I'm often misunderstood. So I'm gonna try my best to say this the right way, and I want nobody to take offense to it. Whenever we bring up problems in Albany, we often address those problems that are being brought to the attention of the community by talking about all the things that we're doing right. And those things then overshadow everything that's wrong. And so I do want to have discussions about this and talk about solutions and how we can fix this and make things better here. But that's what, that's what I want to do. I want us to focus our energy on making it better. I don't want it to be a whole presentation of all the things that we're doing right. Because then it overshadows, and it takes away from the energy that we can use to make it better. We already know Albany is awesome, and we already know all the things that are awesome. But there are some deep-rooted issues and some systematic things that are in place that make it really hard for students of color to go to school here and really hard for community members of color to live here. And so those are the problems that we need to, to focus on. And then we can give ourselves a pat on the back another time. But I do agree with Vice President Duran, and I would like to see this be an agenda item. But during that time, I want to really focus on how we can make things better and how we can fix the issues that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, if I can just say really quick, I totally agree with that. And I know, while working on this campaign, our intent was definitely to have an ongoing conversation with the board and work directly with them as partners, working towards a common goal. So we would definitely love to meet with the board, talk with, yeah, just have ongoing conversations, maybe with our whole group too, because this is only a small portion of us. So, yeah, we would just love to talk more about these issues in more depth. Thank you.
Okay, so we will, the Agenda Committee will make sure that this does come back with the chance to have more interplay, more information, and maybe some, some steps and to move forward. And I think that means we should go ahead and listen to our next speaker, Camille Fisher. Ms. Fisher, go ahead.
Okay, hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me? Okay, great. So I just wanted to come to this presentation and be part of this board meeting to support Miriam and Julian and Zora and the rest of the people on the Diversify Our Narrative team. I am so honored and proud of you guys, and I love you guys very much. You know that because I've taught most of you or interacted with most of you. I also want to beg the board to actually make changes. And, and I love that there's been past initiatives brought up, but really focused on what we can do now. And even if it's a long, strenuous, stressful process, to actually dive into that process and actually make some changes. And there was a common theme that I kept hearing about. Diversifying our narrative is great to show representation for students. But I also think that it's important to note that it's also a missed-out opportunity for education of students that don't identify as Black or Latinx or Indigenous or any other type of intersectionality with sexism, ableism. And so I think it doesn't just give a brave space, a safe space for our students that do have these identities, but then it also is just a missed-out opportunity for all of our students in Albany. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Our next speaker is Mac Lee. Ms. Lee, go ahead. Looks like there might be some technical difficulties there. Let's come back to Ms. Lee, and we'll see if our next speaker, Neary Castillo McIntyre, is ready to speak at this point.
Good evening, board. Thank you for having this conversation. And I really want to thank the students for bringing this presentation and having this conversation. You would be surprised at the radical change that you are creating right now because it was barely one year ago, in May of last year, that the board was presented with an opportunity for a mere introduction between the district staff and Facing History and ourselves. And that mere introduction was shut down by one of the teachers in the school that amounted pretty much to, "Mind your own business. We know what we're doing, and we need to hear these suggestions." So the fact that these suggestions are coming from the students and that they are speaking the facts of their own experience make a real difference. And I'm glad to hear that that is having an effect on the staff and also on teachers, as we have heard from the library staff, from teachers, and even teachers recognizing that they can and are willing to do better. So I want to renew in front of the board and the superintendent this idea of the possibility of bringing or partnering with Facing History and ourselves so that teachers are trained on how to develop a curriculum that tackles issues of racism and other issues of discrimination. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that comment. Our next speaker is Amanda Cohen. Ms. Cohen, go ahead, please. Ms. Cohen, looks like she's still muted. I'm still seeing, I'm not hearing Amanda Cohen. Can you double-check the mutes? Okay, we'll, looks like we'll need to come back to Ms. Cohen. We'll move on to, we can try Mac Lee again. Go ahead. Unfortunately, we're, there must be technical difficulties. There, we're still not able to hear. I suggest we move on to Emily Surowitz. Ms. Surowitz, go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, and thank you. I'm really proud of our students tonight, a bunch of faces that I'm familiar with. And I just wanted to thank the students for their hard work and initiative and, and remind everybody that we're really in this together. We care so much about the upbringing of every kid in this district and our community. And I would like us, I would like, I would like us to be mindful of how important that collaborative spirit is. I know I've worked with Facing History for my whole career. It's why I raised my hand. I think it's an invaluable resource. They're a tremendous resource to teachers. And we're committed to, you know, anti-racist, equitable teaching where students are empowered to raise their voices and be part of our world in really, in really positive and productive ways. And so I would just want to tell you kids, you young adults, I should say, that I'm on board with you and I'm proud of you. And please know that, I would want to agree and echo what Trustee Dos said when he said, "We have a lot of pat-on-your-back moments, and we know how to do that." And I, and I believe in it too. I believe in so much of the curriculum and the dedicated teaching that, that we try to provide to students. But if, that's true, and I agree. And so we have to go beyond teachers. We have to go beyond asking teachers to come to a board meeting and sort of justify the ways that we're trying to reach out to kids. It needs to be bigger than that. That's my plea. So I want to say, "I hear you. I support you. I'm proud of you." And please go beyond just the classroom teachers in making systemic change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's try to hear from Mac. Let's try to hear from Mac Ali one more time. And this will be our last public speaker. We'll bring it back to the board and our student presenters for final comments after this. Go ahead, Ms. Ali. Oh, I'm so sorry. We still can't, we can't hear you. Okay, I regret that. We've had one more person raise their hand. Let's, we'll make Trini Porras our final speaker on this report before we bring it back to the board and to our student presenters to sum up. Go ahead, Ms. Porras.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Trini Porras, and I'm a junior at AHS. I'm also part of the Albany Diversifier Narrative Team. And as a mixed-race student, I feel very underrepresented in my classes with the curriculum taught. I'm sure that I'm the only, not the only one who feels this way. While working on the campaign, I realized how the literature taught in my English classes was lacking in diversity. I understand that there are lists of books for teachers by authors of color, but those are just recommendations, and most teachers don't actually teach them. With this initiative, we would really be able to diversify our English classes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porras. Now, I'd like to bring it back to the board for any final comments and also to our student presenters. We appreciate you being here. It's the first day of school, and I don't know if you guys have homework or not, but you've stuck with it this whole time. So we appreciate you being here and staying with us.
Yeah, President Tutan, I'd like to go.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to start off and say, I want to thank everybody for speaking their truth, especially our students. The presentation and their proposal was really well put together. I'd also like to suggest that I've been on the board for a few years, and I've seen things get fast-tracked, especially if it's something that the board and the district really wants to do. I've seen times where important issues were brought up, and unfortunately, it took like years and years for anything to get done. So I would propose that we, as a board, bring this back as soon as possible to get as many people involved in the conversation to actually make real change. Change starts at home. And I'm so very proud of our students and the community for bringing this up. So once again, hats off to everybody. And I hope I can get the board and the staff along to trying to fast-track this. Because like I said, I have seen things move really, really fast when there's the will to do it. And I believe there is the will to do this. So that would be my suggestion or recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Clark. Student presenters, do you want to close us out on this issue?
Yeah, I think just like to end, just once again, putting across, we want this to be an ongoing conversation. So if anyone has any more questions or any more comments, we'd be happy to answer and reply to them. And just in general, the next time that these, that this is brought up, we'd love to be part of that conversation and work with you, not, work with you to make sure that this change takes place. So thanks for your time again. But yeah, we just want this to go, go as far as it can.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I think you will definitely be part of any future efforts, and you're part of the solution here.
Yeah, adding on to that, I think we just really like to thank the board for allowing us to present today and for being really flexible. I think it was really great to get on the agenda, because talking with the original executive board, I believe we were one of the first districts to actually get on the board's agenda, which was great. So we just really want to thank you for the opportunity to present. And of course, we'd love to be part of the ongoing conversation in the future. So thank you so much.
Go ahead.
And I think our students deserve a standing ovation. Thank you.
Definitely. All right. And I got the first email from this came from Miriam Gohar, and I want to reach out and thank her for taking that step and making this happen. All right. Okay, you, this will come back to us again in the, in the near future. Thanks a lot. And with that, I'd like to move on to our item 12, Staff Report. Reopening Schools Update.
Thank you, President Tutan. Tonight, you're going to get an abbreviated abbreviation of reopening school update. As you know, schools are open virtually, or we call remotely. And leading our presentation tonight will be our very own Assistant Superintendent Marie Williams. Join at some point with our Executive Director Alexia Ritchie and our Director of Maintenance of Facilities, Mr. Ben Marego.
Thank you, Superintendent Wells. Good evening, board. I will be brief. Thank you. So we just, Julie, if you could pull up the presentation, that'd be great. Thank you. So as Dr. Wells said, school is in fact opening, so we are no longer on the road to reopening. We are open. So tonight, just very briefly, we wanted to touch on just a few items. And certainly, I was going to talk a little bit about the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, which we have sort of been using as our roadmap for reopening schools. But you'll get to hear about that plan at the eighth board meeting and also at the meeting on the 22nd, so I won't belabor that. Other than to say that we launched a Thought Exchange on Saturday, Saturday morning, to gather input from staff and from our community about areas for us to focus on as we plan to reopen schools and try to provide a robust remote learning experience for all students, as well as attend to students' social, emotional, and mental health needs. And I'll just tell you that since Saturday, we've had 482 participants, 502 thoughts, and 15,625 ratings. And so I really, Thought Exchange actually reached out to me and asked if they could help us in this process. And I think it's just such a great way for our community to be involved in a conversation at one time and, you know, provide feedback to one another in the form of ratings. So I've really enjoyed working with Thought Exchange again. I'm going to be meeting with them tomorrow. Our exchange will close at the end of the day tomorrow. We'll have an opportunity tomorrow to begin to take a look at some of that data. And then on Thursday, will be the second of three Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan Advisory Committee meetings, of which Vice President Dron and Student Board Member Leo Corso-Clark are members. We will be disaggregating data. We will be taking a look at the feedback in preparation for drafting this plan, which will come to the board for a public hearing on the 8th. So Julie, you can slide past this, the next slide. You can slide past the next slide. And you can go to the next slide, please. So then I'd like to introduce our Executive Director of Student Services and Special Education, Alexia Ritchie, who is going to speak a little bit about social, emotional, and mental health support during this time. Thank you.
Great, wonderful. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Williams and community that's joining us today, as well as our board members and Superintendent Wells. I also wanted to mention a little bit about special education. So please allow me a little more time to also include an update on our special education services. And so the social, emotional, and mental health supports in our district, I think, run the gamut in terms of, are we supporting our students as well as our family members? But included in that, of course, is the staff. And so to start out with our staff self-care during remote learning, I would like to thank our Mental Health Coordinator Shelley Ball, who has been working with our staff members. In fact, I think there was a couple of group meetings that she had over the previous weeks. And so she's going to be continuing those into the school year. And we also have a very then robust mental health program at all of our sites. I've mentioned that before, and I'll touch on that briefly a little bit later. Also, the idea of creating community in the virtual classrooms, I think, has been first and foremost, one of the best practices, certainly not just in our district, but as other school districts are moving towards the remote learning and have been very happy to see that a lot of our staff members are participating in professional development specifically to strengthen their idea of creating community in the virtual classroom. And of course, when we start with social, emotional learning and creating community, oftentimes, the academic supports are a little easier to engage. And so we do appreciate all of the supports from our mental health support staffs at each of our sites. Again, I did mention that we have our health supports, in fact, in terms of how we're able to cover students from preschool up through transition. Transition is our special education program for students who are 18 and above. And we have this again available for all members of our community, staff, students, and families. We have a wonderful model in our district, and we really are appreciative of the support that our district gives us. We have therapists. We also have multiple interns. Interns and those models then continue at each site previous to what we've had. We try to replicate it as much as possible, although right now, of course, it's always remote. I'm also really happy to note that I'll be rejoining the AUSD Wellness Committee. We're going to continue. We want collaborative communication. Our Wellness Committee involves many different stakeholder groups. So I believe our first one is coming September. We'll be able to report back out on the Wellness Committee. And just to mention, the Wellness Committee is very much involved with both mental health supports, social, emotional learning, but also very influential when it comes to policies and those in the district that specifically support the whole child. If I could, then Assistant Superintendent Marie Williams, just to let you know that we'd like to update our community. We had a wonderful special education IDEA parent webinar last week. I believe about 133 participants and attendees joined us. If you would like to view that webinar, it is linked to our AUSD website. So there's a lot of information, including some information specifically to parents with continuity learning plans, with assessments, with being able to contact your teachers and anybody else at sites who can really help support your student with an IEP or a 504 plan. Again, please refer to our webinar, and if you have any further questions about the services that your students are receiving, please do not hesitate to reach out to me, aritchie@ausdk12.org. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Executive Director Ritchie. So we can go to the next slide, please, Julie. Thank you. So as Dr. Wells mentioned in his superintendent's report, as he was visiting campuses today, teachers are in classrooms, and there are personnel on our campuses for the first day of school. And so here, we just wanted to reflect to you some of the health and safety protocols that we have put in place to ensure that our staffs can be on campuses safely, so requiring masks and face coverings. I won't read the list off to you. You know, limiting campus visitations, ensuring that common areas don't have too many folks in them at once, so that we can maintain a safe environment for our staff as they are accessing our campuses. And then I know that our Director of Maintenance and Operations, Ben Marego, is here. And if you wanted, sir, briefly to speak to any updates around maintenance, now would be a great time. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Williams. Good evening, Board President Tutan, fellow board members and Superintendent Dr. Wells. Under the Health and Safety Protocols, it's broken down into two categories, remote learning and hybrid learning. Under remote learning, basically, everybody is coming to work already with a face mask. But we have been providing face masks as needed. And when the students return, face masks will be able to be provided for all those who need them. With respect to physical distancing, we have a very dedicated staff, even though we have been given reminders that practicing physical distancing is practicing a very healthy and positive habit. As far as common area protocols, those are also being put in place. And with that, as staff return to their work areas, we have been distributing Plexiglas shields for those who feel that they, they need that in the course of their daily work. Under frequent hand washing, now that staff has returned, we have begun distributing large container hand sanitizer containers, as well as we began distributing hand sanitizer to the classrooms, as well as spray bottles for the teachers. I'm going to touch on frequent hand washing once the students return. Once we know of a date, we will be putting out hand washing stations. And we're also going to be putting out high-traffic hand sanitizer stations, as well to complement those hand washing stations. As far as indoors, we are going to be placing hand sanitizer stands in various areas of the campuses for use. As currently, there's limited campus visitation, and the sites have been practicing subsequent screening protocols, as well as infection protocols. Staff training has been and will continue to be provided as we continue to learn about this virus. Now that we know which classrooms and areas are going to be occupied on a daily basis, we are finalizing our daily cleaning and disinfecting schedules, and they will be adjusted once the students arrive, as well as finalizing our air filter upgrades. That is it for as far as maintenance. There's also the hybrid protocols. What was mentioned as far as remote, those protocols will remain in place, as well as there'll be additional considerations. The student cohorts will be supervised to maintain their physical distancing, as well as there are entrance and exit routes being established for the campuses. And above all, all these protocols are so that students, when it's time for recess and lunch, they can safely enjoy those activities. And as far as outdoor space, that will be utilized when permissible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marego. We can go to the next slide, please, Julie. So there was a question specifically asked about information related to return to in-person instruction. And so I have just a couple of slides here for you. And so as we know, July the 17th, the governor issued guidance that required schools that were on the county watch list to remain closed and offer remote instruction only. So we are closed. And at that time, information, some information was provided about the availability of waivers to allow elementary schools to provide in-person instruction. And so as it pertains to our county, Alameda County, the Department of Public Health is currently not considering issuing waivers for elementary in-person instruction. But we recognize that that might change at any time. And if you go to the next slide, we can see how quickly information is in fact changing. So relative to this issue of waivers is the notion of hubs. So on August the 14th, Governor Newsom and State Board of Education President Linda Daring-Hammond gave a press conference announcing some availability of sort of a hub situation to account for students with acute needs. And at that time, they indicated that guidance would be forthcoming. So when this presentation was put together and submitted as of the 21st, there was no guidance around these hubs. And low and behold, today, there, there is new guidance that has come forward. So it came to my attention about maybe 30 minutes before this meeting was to start. And so I have, I quickly printed it off so that I can begin studying it. And so I shall try to bring you the information today. But certainly, maybe at a future time, I can follow up with sort of what the guidance is expressing around the availability of hubs and things like cohort sizes and adult supervision and for whom those students, for which students might be served. So that is information that just became available from the Department of Public Health today. And so news is ever-changing. And so news is ever-changing in this context. The last thing I'll just touch on here in this brief presentation is, again, there was a request to hear about the use of outdoor spaces. And so currently, as we are in remote instruction, students are receiving instruction off school campuses, not in person. But we have been in conversation, we've had a couple chats with the city of Albany, about being able to potentially use city space for outdoor learning and/or enrichment. And so it was a very sort of creative and generative meeting around partnering with the city to be able to use outdoor space when we are in a position to return to learning on our campuses. And we are appreciative of our partnership with the city, and we'll continue that conversation. So I hope that was brief enough, Dr. Wells. This concludes the brief reopening schools update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Williams. We always have time for hearing about our, our school issues. So I appreciated that information. Comes to the board now for any board questions or comments, and then we'll have public comment on this item.
I'll just, I'd like to thank Assistant Superintendent Williams for looking into the, staying on top of the waiver information and letting us know about it. I know that the staff are, you know, enmeshed in all of this. And I think most board members are following it pretty closely. But I know, I hear from parents all the time, well, why can't we just have the kids on campus for PE? Or this or that. And so I think it's helpful to give these kinds of updates that are very clear about what we are and are not allowed to do. So thank you for doing that.
Vice President Jerome.
Thank you. I have a couple of things, and I don't mean to drive Assistant Superintendent Williams crazy, but I wanted to see if maybe in a couple of board meetings, if there could be a presentation in terms of the younger kids, the, the Albany Children's Center kids through, say, fifth grade. I mean, those are the kids that we all understand and know have the most difficulty with remote learning, right? And, and the issue may not be here today, but it may be next week. And, and we're going to be hearing from parents. And I'm wondering if we could start developing a solid plan around the earliest time that the younger kids could come back to campus, right? In-person instruction. So it's just something I wanted to throw out there as a thought. And another thing, I know that, also Assistant Superintendent, if at some point, too, I know that standards was one of the issues of discussion about the teacher selecting, and it would be very comprehensive and throughout the grade levels, certain standards that would be focused on since the time, it's just not possible to focus on all the standards. And at some point, if the Board of Education could be educated about what standards, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? And the last question is for Mr. Borrego. If, if you could just briefly say something about two issues that I know have been brought up by staff. One is the windows at Cornell and how those are being addressed. And also, I saw in my notes from an agenda way back in, in November, I believe, that there was HVAC problems at Albany High School. And how you have already addressed those issues, or how you're planning to. Thank you.
Thank you. With respect to Cornell, that is a very interesting challenge in that currently, there is no HVAC system in place. And with our having to provide that kind of environment, a safe environment for the students under the present conditions. I had been doing research to be able to, there is a couple of options that we have that I'm looking into, and I'm also getting some, some, talking to a consultant. And that one option with respect to COVID, the outdoor ventilation is recommended to come in, and with that, a certain number of changes of air per hour. So we're possibly thinking of, one option is to place window fans to draw in the outside air with the windows open. Another option is to install exhaust fans to take out the existing air. But both of those also bring the challenges of noise. So it's not something that we can easily go in order. And I do want to bring out the point that we are dealing with the situation as being placed before us due to the current virus and, and the bad air quality, for example. We're not viewing it, at least on my part, I cannot view it as a traditional project to try to alleviate those issues. So that is, as far as COVID, as far as the bad air quality and HVAC, being new to the district, and we have construction projects going on at Ocean View and Marin, what is a good way to handle the AC problems? Because last year, I was told Dr. Wells ordered the portable air conditioners to try to be able to make those classrooms comfortable. Because again, and I got a compliment, I'll be unified, we have environmental issues, we have global warming. So we don't have the normal summers that we once did. So to be able to address those, I'm looking at possibly installing many split systems that would be able to provide what the classrooms need for several years. If it's going to take that long before we're able to address the issues at Cornell, being the oldest campus. So that's where I'm at on that, as far as Cornell, as far as the high school. In fact, yesterday, we had, we've had a HVAC company come out, and we've addressed those particular classrooms that have been of concern. One of them, we think we took care of, that's on the second floor. The other is on the first floor, and we did add another device to it. So in fact, I was there this morning, talking to the teachers, and we're going to monitor how those, that classroom is, or that classroom divided into two classrooms is performing, because that's part of the problem. So I've told them what could possibly be the next step if that doesn't alleviate the problem that they've been currently experiencing.
Thank you, Director Borrego.
Okay, can I mention one last thing? Whatever we feel that might work, we will be bringing it to the board. Because again, this is a different situation, it's not a traditional project. We're looking at trying to get these classrooms ready so that when the students come back, then the classrooms are able to perform.
Thank you, understood that this is a fast-track project. Okay, if there's no other questions from board members on reopening schools, then I believe we do have a public comment. Ms. Appel, go ahead.
Hi, this is Amy Appel, talking again. So today, the California Department of Public Health issued some new guidance regarding cohorts of children in educational and childcare settings. And it's my, my read of this indicates that, that they are now authorizing students. This is a quote. Students with disabilities and English learners and in-person support for at-risk and high-need students to begin now. So I'm just wondering if the district has had a chance to look at this new guidance and when we might expect to see some of our high-need and at-risk students returning to receiving some services, of course, under the public health conditions onsite.
Okay, thank you for that comment. My understanding, both you and Assistant Superintendent Williams both stated that this guidance was just issued today, I think even this afternoon. And so I will turn it over to the district, but I'm sure we're going to be hearing a lot about this. I'm not sure that anybody's ready, you know, we haven't had much time to digest this information yet. Dr. Wells, or?
Sure, we're meeting with our county health officials weekly, and sometimes even more often than that, based on the guidelines that are coming out, the, being on the watch list and looking at what they call the big umbrella of readiness, whether or not the district is ready to do this. Because it's not just giving the green light. Because what it really means that if you're going to move forward with doing this, here are the guidelines, and you can do it. But the other piece that they, they highlight at the county, the health officials, is our readiness. And our readiness range from a number of different perspectives. One of which is whether or not we have staff ready to do this, because we have to make sure we have that readiness and various kind of agreements we have in place to start this process. So it's not as simple as the read we have before us today. It's more complicated than that. And so we're looking at a number of different scenarios that we can give in a, an update with a little more detail and maybe a date of our readiness. And then even assessing what folks are doing in the neighboring districts and their readiness as well when it comes to looking at hubs that we considered initially for our most vulnerable population, ranging from special ed, intervention, ELD, and things of that sort, including our tutorial services. So what thing we don't want to do is have a quick knee-jerk reaction. But we have considered a number of possibilities as we've worked with our bargaining units and how we do this safely in a way that's effective and meaningful to all.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wells. Board, do we have any final comments on reopening schools? If not, then I'd like to ask for an extension. We, when we made this agenda, we were hopeful that we would be finished by 9:10, the time it is now. And we still have all of our review and action items to get through. I believe that we will need an extension of probably at least 45 minutes.
I'll move to extend the meeting to 10 o'clock.
A second.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Student Board Member Corso Clark?
Yes.
Student Board Member Mala?
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley?
Yes.
Trustee Das?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Vice President Jerome?
Yes.
And President Chutain?
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously, we're extended until 10 o'clock. And we will move to our review and action section. Our first item, 13-1, appointment of budget advisory committee for board members. Trustee Hinckley, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. So I actually don't remember which meeting. Oh, June 16th. On June 16th, I brought this outcome from our subcommittee of the Budget Advisory Committee as a discussion item. And we discussed for quite some time the role of the Budget Advisory Committee, the roles and responsibilities as they are in this document here. And we said that the next step would include bringing back this summary of activities as an action item, as well as the addition of two board members to the committee itself. So the committee currently does not have any board members officially as members, which means that board members can attend, but don't, aren't voting members. And one of the outcomes of the discussion of the subgroup, as well as the full board's discussion in June, was that we wanted this committee to be led more strongly by the board. So nothing in here is any different from what we talked about in June. We just needed to do it as an official action item. So this backup restates the roles and responsibilities that we talked about as the purpose of the Budget Advisory Committee, and also formally adds two board members to the committee itself. And this, it, one of our next items, we would talk about who those board members are. This is just to make those two roles part of the committee.
Questions or comments?
President Chutain?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Wells.
The, just a maybe clarification on bullet number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I think it's bullet six, any board member can also ask specific questions, which will be agendized. And do we want the will and shall, or do we want a may? Here is, you know, this is like one of those shalls. Maybe that was intentional, but I just thought I'd point that out.
I mean, that's the version that we talked about. I guess what you're thinking of is, might there be a circumstance when we wouldn't actually want to task the Budget Advisory Committee with something that a board member comes up with?
I think our friend, this, this throws out the option. And I counted earlier, but didn't bring it to your attention, I don't think, so my apologies. But just something to think about, since it's in front of us, that, because that shall and will is non-negotiable if the board goes and approves it. That's all I wanted us to be conscious of. I can work with it either way, but I just wanted to bring that to our attention.
I would be happy changing it to may. I don't know if others, I, I just want to be cautious of, we've run through this list a couple of times with different bodies. So if, if there's only one minor change, that seems fine, but maybe we don't, we want to be careful about delving back into the substance of it.
Yeah, you're right, that would be my only ask. Thanks so much, Trustee Hinckley.
Do any other board members feel strongly about keeping it as will?
I guess what I'm thinking about is that there might be circumstance. I mean, I think the thing that's most likely to happen is that a trustee might ask questions that the district office could answer fully and completely on their own, that wouldn't really need to go to the Budget Advisory Committee. And so to me, the flexibility there to get a question answered through different routes would be, would be worth the change. Yeah, I think that anything that, if it were changed to will instead of, if it were changed to may instead of will, I still think that any, any necessary questions that a board member asks could certainly be heard by the committee. That's just, that's my opinion as one board member. Any other trustees want to weigh in on that? Then I will ask, go ahead.
I can make a motion, I'm trying to scroll the Zoom screen, that doesn't work. I move that we approve the appointment of the Budget Advisory Committee for board members. I move that we approve the appointment of the budget advisory committee for board members.
Okay.
I'll second.
I just want to make clear, Trustee Hinckley, I want to make clear that you're also motioning that we adopt the suggested clarifications of the role of the budget advisory committee.
Yeah, for some reason, the title doesn't quite include the whole purpose of the action, but yes, that we approve this whole document.
And Vice President Duran, you're maintaining your second. We have a vote, please?
Student Board Member Corso Clark?
Yes.
Student Board Member Ramala?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Did you say, did you say Dos that cut out?
Yes, Trustee Dos.
Oh, yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Vice President Duran?
Yes.
President Trutain?
I want to ask for a clarification if the motion included the change of the will to may?
Yes.
Okay, then my vote is yes.
Thank you. And Trustee Hinckley?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously on the appointment of budget advisory committee for board members and the clarifications of the role of the budget advisory committee. And that brings us to our action item 13-2, the 2020-21 Committee and School Assignments for Board of Education Members. This is always a fun item every year. Ms. Shen, if you want to go ahead and show the other page that has the current assignments. We have a brief update on this one, so I'm going to share moment. Okay, thank you very much. So our first committee listed, I'm sure you guys, everybody had a chance to study this in the agenda packet, our first committee is the two-by-two-by-two meeting, which is the meeting of two board representatives, and in addition, our superintendent is always present with the City of Albany and the two representatives, other people sit in also from University of California at Berkeley. And this is an informational meeting that takes place quarterly. The president of the board is always present, plus one other trustee, and it rotates so that every board member is present at at least one two-by-two-by-two during the year. I am happy to keep that as it is, but we could also make a change if the board feels like they want to appoint just one person as the additional trustee. That would be fine if the board wants it to remain as a rotating spot. It's also perfectly fine. And you can see the rest of the committees that are down here. I wonder if it would be best simply for us to go through and state what each trustee would like to continue with and what they might want to change. So maybe we could use our voting rotation to go through one by one. Who would be next, Ms. Shen, on our voting rotation?
Trustee Clark would be next.
Trustee Clark, would you like to change or continue with your committees?
Excuse me, could I just ask a question? Before we began, excuse me, Trustee Clark, interrupting. You know, you had raised a question, President Trutain, around the two-by-two-by-two meeting, and I sort of wanted to ask a question as well, which is for, other than us meeting, the other four trustees, in terms of you as the president and the superintendent Wells, do you feel that, I mean, I find it fascinating to go and I learn always, but I'm wondering, is that the most helpful way for both the school district and, oh, well, the other people participating, we're not that concerned about, right? But in terms of, is it a helpful process or the way we do it? Or does it somehow impact in any negative way that we all kind of come once a year to one of those meetings?
I see what you mean, and that's a very good point. I think that, you know, I will certainly continue this fall as president, and then when the board elects a new president, then that person will come in. And I do see the benefit of that continuity. I think that anyone who's on the board might become, an officer might become the president in, you know, in the next year. It's open to everyone. And because of that, and because of the need for all of the trustees to be aware of the issues that involve all three of these entities, I think that it is useful to have every trustee come at least once, even though it does limit continuity. Dr. Wells, do you have any feelings about that? Sure. I guess, I guess not. So that would be my.
I'm sorry, I was talking and saying a bunch of wonderful things and I was muted, so my apologies. I would say anytime we could talk with our partners in any form of collaboration is a good thing, and it's certainly better than not talking to them. But it's only one way in which we can build and do collaborative things together, and for that reason, I think it's more beneficial than not. We are going to explore other ways in addition to the two-by-two-by-two and how we work together. One example, President Trutain, we engaged in today, more to come hopefully at our next board meeting in terms of superintendent update or president update. So the short answer is yes, it's more positive than not.
That wasn't the question, though, Superintendent Wells? The question had to do around if you felt it would be more beneficial if just one additional board member beside the president attend the meetings as opposed to the rotating basis that we do right now.
Right now, Vice President Duran, we have two board members who attend, along with myself. We currently have two board members that attend the two-by-two-by-two meetings. And if you're asking if we should have one more, or were you thinking?
I think she's asking, should these be two permanent appointments so that it's the same two board members every time? I mean, I would prefer that we continue to rotate it for the reasons that President Trutain said. I think this isn't a meeting in which work is being done in the same way that, you know, the policy committee, I think you lose a lot by having different people there every time. But in this case, I think the purpose is more to sort of understand how the other entities are operating and the issues they're facing, and I think it's a good idea for all of the board members to be exposed to that at least once a year, which is the only opportunity we get anyway. So that would be my.
And my apologies, Vice President Duran, the short answer is that I think the rotation is a good thing. I agree with both Trustee Hinckley and President Trutain. So sorry about that clarification.
Okay, I think that we might be able to move on to Trustee Clark regarding committee placements.
So yeah, so it was your original question, if I want to continue on the one I'm on, where I'm at currently?
Exactly. Do you want to continue with, I think you're on fundraising advisory committee and the wellness advisory committee, which should reconvene later this fall?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. Ms. Shen, who's our next?
Vice President Duran?
Yes, currently, I'm on the board policy committee and also the LCAP or the local control, yes. And I would love to continue unless somebody else feels strongly that they would like to be on that committee, on any of those two.
Thank you, Ms. Shen.
Next, we have you, President Trutain.
Okay. So I would definitely like to continue with the two-by-two-by-two position and with my position on the board policy committee. And I would like to also continue on the budget advisory committee. And I believe that the Marin Elementary School Design Team is almost done, so that really, I think, is going to drop off. And I would like to maintain my position on the Sustainability Integrated Design Committee, which I think is going to change its name soon to the Climate Action Committee. Let me see, then. I think we would go next then to Trustee Hinckley.
Yes, thank you.
I'm also happy to stay on the committees that I'm on, the budget advisory committee, the fundraising advisory committee, and the soon-to-be Climate Action Committee.
And Trustee Dos?
Yeah, I'd like to no longer be on the Marin Design Team.
Okay, but you, let me see. What about the Wellness Committee?
I'd like to be on the Wellness Committee.
Great. Okay, so I think we have our committee assignments, and please realize that with Trustee Clark and myself are not candidates for reelection. And so the board, when it's reconstituted and with the new board members that will be elected in November, this is going to need to be added to the next agenda after that point so that our committee positions could, well, everything could be reorganized at that point, but there certainly will be some openings for new board members. And with that.
President Trutain?
Yeah.
Could we also make sure Leo and I are on the committees as well?
Well, I was going to ask you about that because it's a big load to be a student board member, and I think that the way that you guys have engaged with this job makes it even more clear that you're going to be taking on a lot of talking with students throughout the district and bringing the input back to the board. You are very valuable members of these committees, but you're also full-time students. And so if you would like to take a committee position, you are more than welcome to, but I also want you to, I want you to feel like it's your choice because you're doing enough as it is, you're doing a big job as it is. But if you're very interested, of course, we would love to have you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, preferably, I would like to continue with the Wellness Committee.
Yeah. Or could I clarify with Marie? So the LCAP, the LCAP has been waived for the 2021 school year, correct?
Correct.
So we wouldn't necessarily be meeting the year past September for this?
Correct, because we are going to be finishing up our learning continuity and attendance plan process by December, by, excuse me, September the 22nd, yes.
Great, okay. Well, I'm already on that, so I'd like to finish that off. But if that's the case and the LCAP committee won't be meeting beyond September this school year, then I'd like to join the Wellness Advisory Committee and work on that.
Sorry if I could clarify. So Leo, we won't meet to plan for 2021 after September, but in all likelihood, we would be meeting again in the spring to plan the local control and accountability plan for the subsequent school year 2021-22.
Never mind, forget what I said. I'll stick with LCAP, sorry for the confusion. Thank you, Marie.
And thank you, President Trutain.
Yeah.
No problem. And also, Dr. Wells alluded to the fact that there might be some additional committees or task forces that would be in conjunction with City of Albany. We're trying to increase our partnership and our teamwork with the city. And so there might be other opportunities that come up and that we would certainly be interested in board participation by both our student board members and our other board members for that work.
President Trutain, I had a question. Assistant Superintendent Williams, if you, are you guys still going to, because usually you guys do a great job of kind of reporting back to the board about the things that are discussed in the LCAP meetings and things of that nature. So that continues to happen the same with no change, I'm assuming?
Yes. So the plan that we're bringing forward in September will come at the next board meeting, September the 8th, as a public hearing, so there'll be opportunity for discussion. And then it will come back again for potential board review and approval at the meeting on the 22nd, and that would conclude the learning continuity and attendance plan process. And then when we go back to learning, excuse me, when we go back to local control and accountability process, we will initiate the processes that we sort of had in place for that, which is, you know, a more frequent update. So the timeline for this plan is much more compressed than our regular LCAP, and so you're just hearing about it at a couple meetings. But when we start to plan for next year's LCAP, Local Control and Accountability Plan, you will get many more updates as we have done in the past, sir.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Williams, I really appreciate that. Dr. Wells, I have one question for you, if you don't mind. I'd like to, for the two-by-two, what would be the process around increasing participation in that, like including another portion of the community? Because so far, we have individuals from the mayor, vice mayor, the school district, and the university. I'd like to see if we could go about including other members of the community, maybe the police department within those two-by-two, because I think it's important to improve improve, improve that relationship between all entities involved. So I'd like to kind of take that on as a project. So I thought I'd mention that.
I just have a quick response for that. It's important always to have a good relationship with our local law enforcement agency, in this case Albany Police. But typically, two by two by two, basically, you have the chief leaders who represent the city and various municipalities. In this case, the board members with the Albany Unified School District and then some chief officials with UC Berkeley. When you talk about the city of Albany, the chief official, the mayor and the vice mayor represent the police department. And so when you talk about the heads, the Albany Police Department wouldn't be one of the heads at the table. That doesn't mean we shouldn't look for other means and forms and venues to have conversations, to have Albany Police at the table with us in some capacity. And so let's put our heads together and see how we can do that. Because I think the intention, Trustee Dos, is to have ongoing communication with Albany Police Department. Is that correct?
That's my that's my goal.
There's other venues for that, and let's talk about that and put our heads together, how we might do that. The police chief already made mention to myself that he's open to ongoing dialogue. So it may not be the form by a two by two by two, because those are the chief heads. And the police department is not one of those chief heads. They work for the city, so to speak, chief heads. So but let's let's talk about it because it's important, and I think I understand your attentions.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. I appreciate the clarification.
Ms. Shen, if we can move on to school assignments? Now, for the committee work, I think that it's really helpful. And for the trustees, you know, like you might want to try a new committee as your, you know, interest changes, as big projects are completed. But I see the value of continuity and committee assignments. For school assignments, I think that that it's nice to to experience different school sites during your four-year term as a board member. And so with with that, I would like to make a request, which is for my my last remaining few months on the board and until this December, I would like to move from Cornell Elementary to the high school, Albany High slash McGregor. My remaining child in the district is at the high school this year. And so I would I would I would love to have that assignment for this fall.
President Tutain?
Yes.
I'd be more than happy to switch with you, if that's okay with the other board members.
Oh, that would be that would be great with me, Trustee Clark. Other board members, do you want to speak to that?
Fine with me. So Jacob, you're saying you you would like Cornell?
Correct. And also to honor Kim's request. Sorry, President Tutain's request.
Oh, that's fine.
Are we, excuse me, are we going are we going in a specific order? Or are we just kind of?
Oh.
My request out there?
Yes.
The only reason I ask is because I just want to throw my request out there before before it's too late.
Go ahead, Trustee Dos. We're going to free-form this section, I guess.
All right. I have I haven't had the opportunity to work with the school site, Ocean View, and I haven't had the opportunity to work with Albany Middle School. So I'd like to work with one of those if if the other trustees are open to making a switch with me.
Well, at the risk of narrowing Clementina's options, I would love to take, I'd be happy to take on the middle school if we all want to try new schools. And then the three of us could be reordered there.
All right, Vice President Duran, it seems as if the ball is in your court, as they like to say.
Are you, did you say Ocean View, Brian?
I'm open to Ocean View or Albany Middle.
Okay. Yeah, I've been at Albany for a couple of years. That was fun, but I will certainly share it. And I haven't, I mean, I sort of done Marin, but not really. So I'd be happy to to do Marin. And I'll take the Children's Center as well, unless somebody else really wants to do the Children's Center.
I think that that this is working out. I think everybody's getting one of their first choices. I have Albany's Children's Center as Vice President Duran, Cornell Elementary, Trustee Clark, Marin Elementary, Vice President Duran, Ocean View Elementary, Trustee Dos, Albany Middle School, Trustee Hinckley, and Albany High slash McGregor, myself. Is 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 that accurate? Is everyone satisfied?
I I think that myself and Trustee Hinckley should do paper, rocks, scissors for Albany Middle School. I felt like it was a close vote. And I'm just kidding. No, it looks good.
Okay, great. And again, I will mention that these school assignments will need to be revisited in December, when we have new board members elected. And so I, this is a review and action item. So if we could have a vote on the committee membership and the school assignment as as you saw on the screen, I will make a motion that we approve the committee assignments and the school site assignments that we just worked out.
I second that.
Then we have a vote, please.
Yes, Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Yes.
Student Board Member Mala.
Yes.
This one starts with Vice President Duran.
Yes.
President Tutain.
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. That brings us to item 13 dash 3, the Master Contract Between Albany Unified School District and Pediatric Therapy Services, DBA, the Stepping Stones Group.
President Tutain, we would hand this over to our Executive Director, Alexia Ritchie.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. This is a contract that we're asking you to review and act upon approval. We were not successful in finding a speech therapist for Cornell Elementary School. So we have worked with this company before and have asked them to provide us with a speech therapist for the 2021 school year. We have found somebody, and we are hoping that they can get started as soon as possible. Thank you for your consideration.
Questions or comments from the board? If not, ready for a motion?
I do have a quick question, if that's all right, President Tutain?
Please, go ahead.
If if we do approve this, is the search ongoing? And then how does that affect the contract once we find a permanent person for this position?
That's a very good question, Trustee Dos. We would be committed for this person for the entirety of the contract. We also do have the postings still open. We'd be more than happy to work with individuals who are willing to come on board for the year after. But right now, if we approve this contract, we will have to honor it for the entire school year.
Thank you, Executive Director, which I really appreciate the explanation.
My pleasure. Other comments or questions?
If not, I'll move that we approve the Master Contract Between AUSD and Pediatric Therapy Services.
I second.
May we have a vote, please?
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Yes.
Student Board Member Mala.
Yes.
President Tutain.
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
And Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. And with today being the first day of school, I think we this was passed unanimously. I think everyone agreed that we need to get somebody in there providing services. That brings us to item 13 dash 4, Counselor Intern Agreement with San Jose State University.
President Tutain, we hand this one off to our Chief Human Resource Officer, Marina Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me okay? Okay, so this is an agreement with San Jose State University. Specifically, this is for counselor interns. We've had, you know, student teaching agreements with San Jose State, but we've never had one specific to folks who are working towards their counseling credential. And so we are anticipating that we may have a student or an intern working with us in the second semester. And so this is mostly to get ahead of the game so that they can start as soon as they are ready. And because we've never had an agreement before, this is why, for this particular program, this is why you're seeing it on review and action. That's pretty standard agreement. Does anyone have any questions about this?
May I have a motion, please, to approve the Counselor Intern Agreement with San Jose State University?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the council. Can you put it back up so I can read it?
My apologies.
No problem. Yeah, I make a motion to approve the Counselor Intern Agreement with San Jose State University.
A second.
Then we have a vote.
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Yes.
Student Board Member Mala.
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
President Tutain.
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. We move to 13 dash 5, Amendment to Independent Contract Services Agreement by and between Albany Unified School District and Mercoza for construction of two single occupancy restrooms in room M4 at Albany High School.
President Tutain, we're going to hand this one off to our Director of Facilities Maintenance, Ben Borrego. And he will pick it up from here.
Thank you, good evening, once again. We're asking the board to approve the contractor, the amendment for the contractor services with Mercoza Construction for additional scope of work for the two restrooms in room M4 at the high school. First of all, this amendment will probably be will be the last one because the project is completed. The only items remaining is to put together a punch list and to close it out with DSA. The additional work that was added, the first bullet point, it was because of the current pandemic situation. We felt that it was, and not knowing the amount of traffic going in and out of the restrooms, it was felt that we should convert the switches to touchless motion sensors. The second bullet point, originally, the restrooms were designed for primarily students, but then converted to be primarily used by adults. And so the two mirrors were added. Again, not knowing the amount of traffic going in and out, and it, the restaurant is being located in a relatively small office space, it was decided that it would be best to insulate them for because of close proximity of those working by. The last two bullet points were added because when the occupancy of the new addition at the high school was accelerated, Mercoza was willing to help the district by doing these extra miscellaneous items to help in the campus to take occupancy earlier than what was originally stated. By there in a code. And these these items were within the construction contingency that the project was budgeted for. And the project was completed within the approved budget. And these items will be paid from bond measure E. Are there any questions?
I guess I have a quick question, Director Borrego. You mentioned that the mirrors were added because there was the idea that this bathroom might be used by adults. Can can you describe? Are these going to also be used for, will students and adults both have access to these restrooms? I mean, I thought that this was to provide more restrooms for the Ocean View fifth graders that were located in the temporary buildings.
This this project would, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I know I did not ask this question earlier, but I I just feel like maybe they changed the idea about what the use was going to be.
Oh, I was referring to the design process. This was already in place when I arrived, and so I had to kind of get the history of the design process because to add the mirrors, it was kind of, for me, it was it was unusual. And that's when I was told that it was, at first, primarily designed for students in mind. And that's why there were were not going to be mirrors. But because it's also in the location of the front office and will be for a few years, and adults would be using it, it was safe to add the mirrors because walking into a mirrorless restroom sometimes is kind of is kind of frustrating.
I see. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will move that we approve the amendment to the contract agreement between AUSD and Mercoza.
I'll second. Can we have a vote, please?
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Yes.
Student Board Member Mala.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
President Tutain.
Yes.
Trustee.
Yes.
Thank you.
We move to our our last. We move to our, our last item, which is upcoming agenda items matters introduced by the Board. So I'll try to share my screen. Is, are people able to see that? Okay, so we have a special board workshop scheduled for next Tuesday. We're going to spend the first half revisiting the Albany Coming Together recommendations, and we will be setting objectives for the school year in the second half for both the district and the superintendent. Our next regular meeting is September the 8th, where we'll get a school construction update. Well, I think there's going to be a lot to say about that because there's been a lot of work going on. And it will also focus on the voluntary seismic upgrades that are being done to buildings that are not being torn down and completely rebuilt. So there are, there were some board questions last spring about, you know, what exactly does, does that mean? And so we're going to have our expert from our project management firm, Derivik Castellanos Architects, come and explain that to the Board and to the community. We will also see for the first time our unaudited actual financial report for the previous school year. So at the end of every year, there's a reconciliation between what our budget was and what we planned to spend and what we actually spent, you know, because reality can differ from the budget. And this, our budget then is sent out for audit. But what we'll be seeing at the September 8th meeting is the unaudited actual, so our first look at that. So I will stop the share. And if the Board can help me, if we can go over the things that we would like to agendize for future meetings. I heard loud and clear that one thing that we want to do is to look at the, diversify our narrative demands and to bring that, bring that back to the Board. And I did hear some other ideas, but I would rather hear it again from, from the trustees themselves. So if you had an item, please go ahead and speak it now.
I have one, a couple. One is not from tonight, although I had asked about it earlier, is where we are with scheduling the next workshops with the consultant, Nicole Anderson, that we also passed a contract with tonight. But we had been, started working with her as a board and only got one workshop done before the pandemic hit. So I just want to make sure we're really moving forward with scheduling those. So preferably so that it's all moving at the same time with now the new work that she's going to be doing with the district. So that's one, which I think you're already working on and wouldn't be a regular board meeting.
Right, yes, but, but we should work on getting that scheduled. Also, of course, we always have the, the enrollment updates that happen in September. So hopefully, we'll have some very preliminary data, just on what our attendance was like on the first week of school, coming to us in our board update on Friday. But then we'll have a better view and some, a public discussion about that at our September, one of our September meetings.
And I really want to make sure that that includes a discussion of our sort of campaign to bring in more out-of-district students and whether that was successful in terms of attracting students, because we haven't gotten an update on those numbers for quite a while. And I understand things fluctuate over the first couple of months, but it would be great for the Board, I think, to start thinking about whether what we did worked, both in terms of attracting people and also in terms of whether it, the processing of applications and so forth was effective, and then just the numbers of how many students we were able to attract. You know, with all the caveats about the pandemic situation, I would really like to see that as soon as, as we can.
Just an FYI, we plan to try to get that in a Friday communique, this Friday, but no later than the following Fridays when we have more solid numbers. And so that would give us a clear picture of our net gain. So just an FYI. Also, President Chutain, I just want to remind us all that we still have three district goals, the number one being student achievement. And just to let you know that I was going to push all year to make sure that we have our student achievement and our report to the Board and community on a regular basis, starting with our principals giving a presentation of their current data and their response to data and the equity things they're going to do to address our kids who are in need of some additional support to meet grade level standards by the end of the year. So I'm going to keep that on our radar so that we do that on a regular basis, just as an FYI, because we want to make sure that we just don't have student achievement as a posted goal, but it's a practice goal as well.
This would be my last one, but are we still moving forward with scheduling the special meeting that I think Vice President Duran originally proposed, where we talk specifically about all of the achievement data? And I think, I don't remember the last time we discussed this, but probably back in May, that we were going to have a deep dive into the data and sort of move beyond some of the dashboard and other things.
I think.
And it was going to be a separate meeting.
Yeah, and I, and that did get derailed as so much effort was necessary to, to form this remote learning plan and Superintendent Wells and Assistant Superintendent Williams were really pulled into that. I believe that what Dr. Wells just mentioned, this presentation on a school-by-school basis, was meant to be an answer to that request. Am I correct there, Dr. Wells?
Yes, that's part of it. And Assistant Superintendent Williams and myself can do the deep dive in data in our sleep. So that would be an easy request, and I think that's a necessary one, too. But that can be alongside of that umbrella of student achievement, and I think it would be helpful. So thank you, Trustee Hinckley.
There was, I think we, there was a community, community member that didn't get a chance to speak. I think we were kind of just moving, and we moved through to the next section, and they didn't get a chance to speak. But I think that they wouldn't mind if I mentioned a little bit about kind of what they, what they wanted to address. And so maybe we can address it at an upcoming meeting. But they were talking about the committees that we have in place, and we have different committees for different subject matters, and a task force was just formed, you know, around student achievement. And so I think that they, the community member was hoping that we could have a discussion around forming a committee for special education and, and students around that. So if we could put that on there, just to have, you know, to have a discussion around maybe potentially forming that committee, what it would look like, what the members of that committee would look like.
Um, Executive, it's getting late, so excuse me. We've been, I've been at this, most of us been at this early, early this morning, very excited about the first day of school. Executive Director Ritchie, did you want to take a quick moment to respond to that?
Um, can you repeat that for me, please?
Oh, just, there was a community member that didn't get an opportunity to speak earlier when we were talking about the different committees and assigning different board members to different committees. Their hope was to form a committee for special education specifically. And so I was wondering, you know, what the process would be to get that going. And then if we could talk about, you know, who would be on that committee and, you know, how to kind of start that process.
Okay, certainly. So I was actually reading the email that she sent, just to refer back. And it sounds like she did want to make a comment. And so is that the comment, Trustee Dos, that you're referring to, where she had her hand raised, but she was not acknowledged this evening?
That's correct.
Okay, so I can't address that piece, but I can let you know that we do have a special education advisory committee. The council has met once. We're going to be meeting monthly. I believe that we do have Vice President Duran on that committee. And so there is a connection with our Board of Education already. I can certainly explore a little bit more, but reading her email, it sounds like she might be addressing this to the Board of Education. I'm not quite sure. Perhaps we can research that a little bit more with this parent.
I appreciate that, Director Ritchie. I just wanted to mention it because a community member didn't get an opportunity to speak. So I wanted her comments to be on record for tonight's meeting and to let her know that we do acknowledge and want to make sure that we address the concerns of the community during the meeting. So apologize that we didn't get an opportunity to call you during that time, but that we did address your concerns, and we'll follow up with you directly. Thank you.
I, I'm so very sorry. That was completely my responsibility, and I just didn't notice the raised hand. So I apologize this about that I didn't notice your hand for item 13-2. And thank you, Trustee Dos, for, for bringing this forward, and we will certainly address this. And, yeah, so thanks again, and I am very sorry.
Can I jump in now?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, a few items for future agendas. One that I, that I mentioned tonight that has to do with the Assistant Superintendent Williams around some kind of presentation about the standards that the district will be and the teachers will be addressing this school year. And the other about a plan, a development of a plan around how to get the little ones back to school or, you know, ASAP, understanding all the requirements, et cetera, et cetera. But so that we could have something in place. So when that happens, we'll be ready. So that, those are our two. And then I had a couple, and I know it, I don't know if it's been pushed off the agenda list, but 21st century schooling, which I've asked for since last fall. I would like it to, to be on the agenda sooner than later. Also, I went back in my notes and since October of last year, I asked that we address the mission and vision statement because I felt it needed to be corrected. It, something dangling modifier or something, but, but truly, it's, it, it has meaning, too. And I think we could get into a deep discussion about it. So I wanted to be sure. And I know a staff response has been, well, yes, Board can do that. But I just want to know how and when we're going to do that, then, review the, the mission statement. And the other is, I wanted to see if we could add, I don't know, once again, if, when this, how it takes place, the process. But once again, if we, if the Board would consider adding to the meeting norms an ongoing acknowledgement to the indigenous whose land and we are now working on and meeting on. And I would like it to be part of our norms in terms of that acknowledgement. So how we do that, staff can certainly let us know how.
Okay, I think I've gotten all of those written down. Are any further items from the Board? No? Well, thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's efforts tonight, and I look forward to seeing you next Tuesday. With that, we are adjourned.